Okay, if we have, we are recording, we are live streaming, if we have all members of the board here, you can get started. I think we have everyone, are we missing anyone?
I think we're good, Jen.
Okay, I think you can go ahead, sorry about that.
No, thank you very much for all your work there, I'll call the meeting in order and we'll do our flag salute with Rebecca.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Rebecca. Uh, just gonna review the agenda right now for everybody. We will move into public comments right after I'm done, then it will be board comments, superintendent comments tonight, consent agenda, our reports and presentations, Nikki Fowler will be doing a monthly financial report, and then she'll be doing an update on staff vaccination mandates. After that be new business, we have a cell tower Lisa amendment that Nikki Fowler will explain to us. We'll take a quick break if we need to, and after that, we will have, oh, Derek Brown will also be a student investment account, the SIA annual report, and then we will go into policies for ensuring safe environments to learn policy first read, and then we'll have future agenda items, and hopefully we're done. Maybe somewhere around nine fifteen, nine thirty tonight, so. There you go.
Um, direct Chair Brown?
Yes.
May I ask a point of information regarding one of the agenda items?
Sure.
I was wondering if you could explain your, um, what, what your, uh, requirements or how you determine the, the public comments tonight? Because of, of Board Policy BDDH says that the Board will, shall determine, the procedures to determine who's going to be speaking, and I just wondered why the Board wasn't included in any of those decisions.
Well, as Board Chair, I took the seventeen people that called in, we have to stay on our timeframes. When we get to the twenty eighth, we're gonna discuss like a lot of other school boards, possibly moving the, the public comments to later. We always seem to run into timeframe issues. But, uh, yeah, I looked at the, the people calling in, I had a couple of you guys asked me to, look at people coming in for some new faces that, that call into the Board, so we do have some new faces. I do have some very sad news though. Just found out before the executive session that our number three speaker, Dennis Jaeger, he passed away yesterday. And so, on behalf of the, the Board and the school district, I know we all like to give our condolences and prayers to the Jaeger family, and I've not ever met, you know, Dennis before, so, again, just thinking of their family and, yeah, just a sad day for them, so. I think you'll find a pretty good balance of speakers tonight Rebecca, and Jen, if you're ready, we'll go ahead and get started.
I am ready, um. First up, I'm gonna be inviting, Jim Talt.
Dave, in your revised form that you had community members fill out, is there an area where they identify how they're related to the district?
Um, yeah, they did, and they also put down what they, uh, what they want to speak about, so trying to get that balanced, like we have somebody want to talk about budget tonight, and we have quite a few people on the flags, we have a couple of people on vaccines, so.
Could you ask people to, just since, since we haven't seen those, those forms or anything, could you ask people to just identify that? Be awesome, thank you.
Uh, if, Jen, before you go, if people calling in tonight, we appreciate you calling into the Board, and, you know, just identify yourself and let us know, uh, you know, your relationship to the district, and also keeping everything, uh, very civil. We have a three-minute timeframe tonight because we're in a normal Board meeting, and, so, uh, there's a timer on there, uh, so I think it would be pretty easy for you to stay under three minutes. And again, no personal attacks on any of the Board members is appreciated, uh, make your comments to the Board, so. Here we go, Jen.
All right, I think we're gonna get our timer shared up on the screen here, if you just went, we'll go ahead and press the play and your time will start, Mr. Talt.
Do you see or hear me?
I hear you, um, our timer is not working yet, I don't think, one moment. All right, there you go, Mr. Talt.
Now I don't see any video, do you see me?
No, we don't see your video, but you can go ahead with your statement.
Okay, I will, my name is Jim Talt, I'm a Newburgh resident, and I have some now adult grandchildren that went through, uh, school here in Newburgh. Several weeks ago, I wrote the Board to suggest that Resolution twenty twenty dash four should be rewritten and improved. And I have since had a change of heart, and I now feel that that resolution should be stricken, or rescinded, or whatever is the appropriate term, because I don't think it's relevant to Newburgh. The opening paragraph of the resolution names George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Armand Aubrey, as reasons that Newburgh should reform our education system, but Floyd and Taylor died in large eastern cities. That Minneapolis metro region where Floyd died has a population of three million people. And Aubrey was murdered in Georgia, and if you've ever been to Georgia, and I like Georgia, but if you've been there, you know that it is like being in a different country compared to Oregon. Our town of Newburgh has nothing in common with those areas, and we do not have their problems, so this resolution to me is not relevant to our borough and is not needed, and I completely reject the claim parroted by a few with no evidence that there is quote "deep racism" in Newburgh. Additionally, our resolution and the resolutions of Tygarde, Lake Oswego, McMinnville, and even as distant as Traverse, Michigan are largely exact copies, word for word of each other. And this tells me that they are a collaboration of social political agendas by persons and organizations outside of our school district. I must say that I resent this national social political agenda that has been injected into our town by the prior Board and by outside activists, and that it has taken away energy and focus from educating our children. So I believe that Resolution twenty twenty dash four should be just put in a round file. And I see I have forty-four more seconds, so I will say that I do very much like the proposed, I think, GBG policy, and I also like, uh, like that you guys struck out the anonymous clause, which I think was, uh, member Piris's suggestion, and I completely agreed with that. And actually, Brian Shannon, I was surprised at how long it took you to come around to that, but anyway, that's my two cents, and I appreciate you guys listening to me. I only wish that you could have gotten the video working, anyway, thank you very much.
Thanks Jen.
I'm promoting Irene Dunlap to the panel. And on standby is, Ty Hardenmore.
I'm sorry, I missed the name, did you say, can you say the speaker again?
Irene Dunlap.
Okay, that's me. School Board members and Chair, my name is Irene Dunlap, I'm the parent of two Newburgh School District students. I am very concerned about the impact the recent decisions by the Board will have on the district's budget, long-term financial health, and ability to educate our students now and into the future. The Board was well aware when it passed two motions against the advice of district insurance-approved lawyers that it was placing the school district in legal jeopardy, and had previously received notice of intent to sue from both the NEA and the ACLU. Further, on August twenty fourth, two thousand and one, Dr. Morlock warned the Board that disregarding the advice of the approved lawyers puts the district at risk of losing its insurance. The actions of members who voted for the directive, now represented by the policy ensuring safe learning environments, and also voted to leave a mandate making masks optional on the books against the Governor's Directive, are placing the district at grave fiduciary risk. Already, a donor withdrew a promised hundred thousand dollar per year multi-year donation after the Board passed the initial directive to Dr. Morlock to remove Black Lives Matter, Pride, and political symbols. It has been stated that these actions were taken to get politics out of schools, but you knowingly stirred up a political fur. Currently, you are ignoring sound legal advice and the voices of multitudes of students, parents, and educational professionals. No teacher, conservative or liberal, will want to work in a district in great financial peril. We have yet to lose our superintendent, but the recent Board decisions are putting that relationship at risk. A student intent superintendent search and the possibility of having to buy out the contract of a superior administrator who has worked to bring fiscal stability to our district and recruit and retain quality teachers and staff would likely cost upwards of a half million dollars. I respectfully ask you to listen to and act on the advice of the PACE-approved lawyers. I would also like to shed light on the dysfunction of tonight's public comment selection. I have a friend sitting here with me who is a district employee. She signed up weeks ago to give public comment at this meeting. Then we re-signed up when everyone was told to do so and asked to say what side they hold on the issue. She was not selected, she has also written multiple emails and received no replies. It appears you're intentionally silencing the bulk of dissenting voices. In fact, I received a letter assuming I was a conservative voice inviting me to speak. It arrived with a link to sign up, I was chosen, she was silenced. Also, a catalyst Latina GSA student who applied to be a student board rep never even received acknowledgement of her application, let alone an interview.
I'm pulling up Ty Hardmore. And on standby is Brandon Casey.
Dave, can I ask for a quick point of clarification? Did you reach out to people soliciting Board comments for tonight?
And I'm just telling you that what was just said is, I got an email from a couple of you guys saying, you know, have some people call in that haven't spoken before, so that's what I did. The person that I think she's referring to has been, has spoke several times at meetings, and we had twelve, which takes us to thirty-six, almost probably forty minutes in the transition, so. No, it's, it worked, I don't know what she got in the mail or whatever, but.
So you didn't reach out to people?
Looking at what a list here, let's, let's listen these people out, I think you're gonna probably like what you hear, so.
Oh, it's, it's not about liking it, I'm just, I'm just asking a quick question if you actually reached out to people to solicit Board comment tonight.
Finish up, I think you'll be okay.
So you're not gonna answer the question?
I told you, no, let's finish up.
Thank you.
Public comment time, not your comment time, not my comment time, let's finish up.
Okay, I believe you're ready, if you wanna turn on your microphone and we can get you going.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. All right, I'm Ty Hardenmore, a Newburgh resident and parent. Racism and discrimination have no place in our community, and it certainly has no place in our schools. Yet, as I and many others have shared in past meetings with the Board, not only does racism and discrimination have a place in this community, it has a stronghold on this community that many don't wanna see go. As the racist and discriminatory proposed ban on Black Lives Matter and Pride symbols in schools continues to monopolize much of the Board's and the community's time, our students and families are suffering. They feel unsafe and harm is being done to them every day that this Board and this community sits by and allows racism and fear to influence what we know is right, that every student deserves access to an education free of discrimination and harassment. Yesterday, I along with many others in the community became aware that a Newburgh high school student or students took part in a mock slave trade via Snapchat. The fact that a student in our community felt comfortable enough to take part in such a disgusting behavior is a clear illustration of the racism and discrimination that plagues this community. It shows each of us how much work we need to do to make our community and schools welcoming to all people. That is the work that is before this Board, making our schools better, not just academically, but socially and emotionally as well. The four members of the Board who have decided to attack symbols of acceptance and love and turn them into symbols of hate have seemingly done so simply because these symbols do not favor the white majority, and that is incredibly harmful to our students and families of color. The harm to our black students is real, their pain is real, and their fear is real. Now is the time for all of Newburgh to stand up and reject racism and white supremacy. As a community, we still have a lot of work to do when it comes to acceptance and inclusion, but in this moment, we have an opportunity to do better, to be better, and to stand up for all students. I urge you to put your own biases aside and to act in the best interest of Newburgh students. I ask you to protect them, whether you believe they deserve your protection or not. Thank you.
Thanks Ty, appreciate that.
Promoting Brandon Casey to the panel.
Look, I don't know if I'm wanting to hear it or not, but.
Can see you, and you have three minutes, we can start.
Okay, I appreciate it. My name's Brandon Casey, I've got two, um, daughters that go to school here, and a family that's gone to school here for a long time. Boy, I had a couple of things I wanna talk about, but geez, uh, you know, after I heard that, I think maybe I wanna hit on that a little bit. You know, I, I, I am getting a little tired of hearing, uh, people tell me that a BLM sign is a sim, a symbol of love. It's certainly not a symbol of love to those of us that have members of our family that are in law enforcement. Because that group, that's a symbol of love, has called for the murder of police officers. They have said that white people are genetic defects, so I'm a little unclear on how that's a symbol of love. I'm also unclear as to how that helps anybody feel safe in a classroom. You know, um, we all teach our children that, that, that skin color doesn't matter, and that everybody's, you know, we, everybody's made by God, we love everybody, we treat everybody the same, that's what we all teach our kids. This idea that there's some systemic level of racism because a, a somebody in, you know, a kid makes a really poor decision and a bad decision, and that, that needs to be addressed, if that's what happened, that doesn't mean that the town is some horrible, systemically racist thing, and everybody that keeps making this claim never, ever gives any evidence of it, never. It's just, it's just all hyperbole, you know, and it's just, it really gets frustrating, because, you know, we just want our kids to go to school, be taught to read, write, do arithmetic, and come home. And, you know, and, you know, and, and everything seems to be the opposite of that. You know, our kids are masked up, breathing in their own, you know, carbon dioxide, we got, now we got mandates for teachers to get a medication stab in their arm, whether they want it or not, whether they need it or not, whether they choose it or not. You know, and I just, I don't see how any of this helps the school or helps the community. I, first of all, I applaud the four members who took a stand and, and said enough, because we've had enough, and I'm glad that they said they've had enough, and I applaud them. I think that the majority of this community applauds them. You know, we need people like that, somebody needs to take and draw a line in the sand and say, we've had enough, we want our kids, every kid, to come to school, get educated, and go home. I don't know who these people are that don't have access to education, I, I've asked that question, I've never been able to find out who. As far as I know, every child has access to education, which they should, so. You know, it, it just seems like one side of this wants to use, you know, violence, hateful rhetoric, and, and all of these things to shut out the other side. And I, and I think, you know, that, that's really despicable, and I, like I said before, I applaud the four members who have stood up for, right, try to do the right thing, and I think that's what needs to continue, and I, first of all, I think the first thing this Board should do is, is find a new superintendent. I don't think he advocates the views of this community one iota, and I think he's gone against the Board, but the Board, he doesn't.
Sorry, Chair, it's moving a little slowly. Sorry, I didn't call, who's on standby, I'm looking for Ross Davis. One moment, please.
Ross, can you hear us? Yes, sorry about that, I had to unmute myself, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, Directors, thank you for taking my comment tonight. Um, I'll keep it short, I know we're running a little bit behind. Being a school board member, I know, is a really difficult job, but I do wanna say a couple of things. The vast majority of people who fill your positions, uh, they're not professional educators, and many have little or no understanding of research-based practices. This is part of the reason for a close working relationship between a Board and a Superintendent. Our Superintendent is a highly effective educator, well-versed in research-based practices. One of the expectations for our Board is that you both solicit and seriously consider the advice of our Superintendent on educational matters. In my opinion, you have failed in this charge. We also provide our Board with a code of ethics and a cadre of policies to guide your actions and prevent our children's education becoming a political football to be punted back and forth as new members come aboard. Some of you have repeatedly violated essential tenets of this code, including acting in traditionally partisan manners in a nonpartisan position, including hiring a partisan lawyer, not on the approved list that you yourselves created, and visiting a highly partisan talk show where the citizens of this community who have voiced their disapproval of your actions were referred to as a mob. One of your policies specifically details how to handle public complaints. Imagine that, when that process is followed, if it's followed, it provides opportunities to find real solutions that minimize the impact to the larger community and gives the chance for each party to better understand the perspective of the other. Your actions with the BLM and Pride flag bans, they have robbed our citizens of those opportunities. Instead, you see the result, anger, division. I could go on, but I only have three minutes, so I'll sum up how horrific this new Board is. I'll finish with saying that I for one have lost any hope that you will see the error of your ways. A rational person would recognize the danger in bringing national politics to our local community. A rational person would recognize the harm that culture wars bring with division and policies that inevitably further harm already marginalized communities. A rational person would recognize that squandering our tax dollars on hiring illegal lawyers and defending unethical and unconstitutional policies in court is not in the best interest of our children. And a rational person would realize when it's time to stem the bleeding, they have inflicted upon, uh, our community. So, this is, in my opinion, your last chance to prove your rationality. I ask that you resign. Resign your positions immediately, tonight, and let someone else who's actually interested in helping our students get the best education they can receive step up.
Okay, I apologize, next up would be Robert Suppy, I am looking at two names. Signed up twice, so I'll see if I can get him on here for a moment. Mr. Suppy, can you see or hear us? Or do you have a video on? I need to go to the other one. Okay, I think I have Mr. Suppy coming up. Mr. Suppy, can you hear us?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, okay.
Are we ready?
Yep.
Robert Suppy, I'm a district resident, I will start by reading some policies that some members have chosen not to follow. Policy BDDH includes, quote, "All Board meetings with the exception of executive sessions shall be open to the public," end quote. The August twenty fourth meeting prior to the executive session violated this and also likely violated public meeting laws. Why did the majority of the Board decide to do this? BDDH also includes, quote, "Questions asked by the public, when possible, shall be answered immediately by the Chair or referred to staff members for reply," end quote. Please note that "when possible" has no qualifications, clearly this policy is not being followed. The Board and Superintendent Working Agreement includes, quote, "The Board Chair will respond to any communication to the whole Board within thirty-six to seventy-two hours or delegate to another Board member," end quote, and also set some standards for such communication. Why is the Chair not following this policy? On August twenty fourth, the Chair terminated public testimony after less than a third of those who signed up were heard. Where is the authority for this? There is a policy that allows this when speakers will be presenting the same view on an issue, but clearly that can't be known if the Chair hasn't heard or read their testimony. I received a canned response in an email that included, quote, "Community feedback is very important to our decision-making process," end quote. If this were true, Board members wouldn't vote on matters without hearing everyone who was approved to speak, wouldn't vote without reading all-written testimony, wouldn't hold a meeting without the legally required notice, and wouldn't hold a meeting such as the last one where public input wasn't even allowed. Could the Board just be honest about this and quit making the false claim about our feedback being important to them? I want to remind you that you are role models for students. You are showing them that once one gets in charge, they no longer have to follow their own policies, no longer have to follow the law that governs their actions, and no longer have to tell the truth about what is important to them and their role. Is that really what you want to teach the students? I would have hoped not, but the actions of some members speak loudly otherwise. Lastly, I'd like to comment on item nine A. It's difficult to know if some of my issues with the policy relate only to how poorly it is written or if the extreme requirements are actually intended. Does the Board acknowledge that virtually any topic fits the definition you've created of controversial? What topic wouldn't have students on more than one side? Lastly, this proposed policy includes a statement that it, quote, "does not apply to communications during exploration of approved curriculum," end quote. I suggest the Board consider just how this is a pretty I suggest the board consider just how this is a pretty universal exception. All an employee needs to do is to justify that the communication is an exploration of approved curriculum and as such is excluded from the entire policy. Nothing restricts the exploration to staying within what has been approved. Why establish a policy with a loophole as big as this? Lastly, I would also note that the words "black," "lives," and "matter" are likely all in approved curriculum. Thank you.
Chair Brown, we're having some technical difficulties, so bear with us while we try to remedy those.
Chair Brown, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend we just take about a five-minute break or so. We're gonna check in on what's happening out on the two computers that are running the Zoom session. I don't want folks to to run away as another inch in the meeting, but I think we'll go out and check in and maybe back in five, check back in.
Perfect. I got seven forty-one, so seven forty-six?
Yeah, that sounds good. Thanks.
Is it going well?
Okay, Chair Brown, we are still working with our board secretaries, computer hardware. We've got tech support here working on that, but I think we're gonna be okay moving ahead with being able to place the next person in to public comments. I think we should go ahead and continue, and then if we need to do another break or fix something else, we will let you know.
So Jen's ready to?
Yeah, we're actually gonna, she's working on that along with tech support, so she'll be doing double duty while she gets herself up and running again.
And we're having a hard time finding our next attendee, our next speaker, so we're gonna move on to Robin Wheatley. I'm going to promote her. Robin, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Yeah, hey.
Okay, are you ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll start the timer.
Okay, hi, my name's Robin Wheatley. I'm a longtime Newburgh resident with two kids at Newburgh Schools. I wanted to talk tonight about the vaccine mandate affecting Newburgh School staff. Newburgh School District has a vaccine mandate that staff must comply with or lose their job. This is very sad and should not be happening in our community or country. The vaccine status of an individual is private and should not prevent them from employment. How many staff members will lose their jobs for not getting an experimental vaccine in the Newburgh School District? Here is a letter written by a teacher in the Newburgh School District who is facing job loss. I have been an educator for many years and serve this community with love and loyalty. I teach because I have a passion for my subjects and I'm excited to share my knowledge with the students of this district. I teach because I get to build relationships with students and their families and because this is my community. I teach to help build a strong future for those students who are in my classroom and in this district. I teach and I am good at my job. Students come back to see me sometimes when they are out of high school years after I've had them in class just to visit. Students share their lives with me on Facebook and I often see them when I'm around town. They visit because I made a positive impact in their lives. They visit because they remember that in the classroom I was their biggest fan and advocate. They visit because they know that I care about them, even when they're no longer my student. Mandating a vaccine that will cause me to lose my job if I don't comply is not right. Having or not having a shot does not make me a good or bad teacher. It does not mean that I have suddenly stopped knowing my subject or can't make relationships with kids to strengthen their skills. Destroying a career and taking away a livelihood is not right. Understanding that I have religious beliefs that are deep-seated and strong is right. Understanding that the way that I teach doesn't change whether I have a shot or not is right. Understanding that I don't want anything to change or have special treatment is right. Being kind and respectful, you know what we teach kids to be, should apply to this mandate. When someone has an exemption, respect it and be kind to that person. As a school board, you can take a stand. You can choose to respect your teachers and their beliefs, or you can demolish their careers and dreams. Please stand up and protect us. Work with us to keep our jobs. Our community will be stronger for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Robin.
Okay, I'm going to move Andy Byerly next to be our speaker. Andy, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, are you ready?
Perfect. Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
Good evening, Chair Brown and Directors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Because transparency is important, I will preface my comments tonight by sharing that while I serve as an employee of the Oregon Department of Education, my remarks are my own as a concerned community member and, more importantly, a father of two children enrolled in Newburgh Public Schools. I'm a resident of South Newburgh and have lived in this community for over sixteen years. I'm also a former teacher from the Newburgh School District. I'm speaking tonight about the recent board policy that bans political symbols. I first want to publicly acknowledge each student, each human in this community who has felt the burden of the events of this board over the past few months. There are many, many people in this community who see you, who love you for who you are, not despite it, and who proudly welcome the chance to live in community with you. I offer these words as a challenge to you, Directors, that I might not be the only one to say them tonight. Second, I'd like to remind the board of another policy, BBA, which states, quote, "The board is responsible for providing adequate and direct means for keeping informed about the needs and wishes of the public." I'm curious how the board has kept informed about these needs and wishes, particularly of our students. The role of this board is to provide governance to the school district, and the role of the schools in this district is to provide students with a world-class education. This district serves students. So I have to ask, where have the voices of Newburgh students been in the drafting of this policy? What evidence do we have that their voices, the voices of those whom you are charged to serve, have been centered in this work? Other than a few brave students who have made public comments, what evidence can you provide that you've asked for and listened to students in the drafting of this policy? Yesterday, I joined many others in our community who listened to several honest, vulnerable, passionate, and courageous students from our LGBTQ+ community share how being truly seen and welcomed into Newburgh Schools has made them feel, how supported and seen they felt from teachers and staff. Where has the student voice been in the actions of this board? Absent this evidence, I'm left to assume that this policy is driven by personal political agendas. If your interest is not serving students, I think you need to carefully consider the words of a previous community member tonight who asked you to step down. Finally, the very related topic of democracy. A democratic process resulted in each of your elections to this board. Democracy demands of each public servant sincere engagement and dialogue done in a transparent way. Each of you has been elected to an apolitical role, yet the vast majority of the work of this board has been political. I implore you to set politics aside and serve the students of this district and center them in the work that you do. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
All right, poor chair. One second. I believe Michael Gunn has been promoted. Mr. Gunn, can you hear us? Mr. Gunn, are you able to hear us? Hope you're muted.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay.
When you're ready.
I'm sorry, I didn't pop up on there. I don't know what the problem is. Okay, you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Michael Gunn. I'm a resident of Dundee. I've been a lifelong resident of Newburgh, Dundee area. I want to address the attorney, the attorney issue as far as who's representing the school board to start out with. I was an attorney for twenty-five years in Newburgh. I represented a lot of organizations, et cetera. I don't know who the school board, I know the school board retained a person named Tyler Smith and Associates for a second opinion on the banning on the flags, et cetera, banners other than the state of Oregon and the US flag. I don't know who the school board's attorney was before that. It's important to note who actually the attorney represents. The attorney for the school district represents the school district. Board is the governing body. The attorney does not represent the superintendent or anything like that, so I would, I would ask you, who was the attorney that represented the board prior to Mr. Smith? There's nothing wrong with getting a second opinion. That happens all the time with attorneys. I would also say that, and this is not being disingenuous or defamatory towards Mr. Morlock. I know that based upon prior communication with Mr. Morlock and Mr. Langdon, the Langdon, the principal at Dundee, they are certainly not in favor of banning the Black Lives Matter and gay pride flags. Those are clearly political in nature. They have no business in the school district. But what I would say is that the school, the school board as a whole should designate one person from the school board to contact whoever the representative of the school district is, and that person is the contact with the attorney, not the, not the superintendent. Because in my opinion, based on communication with Mr. Morlock and what I've seen from his comments with the school board, he is not in favor of any banning of these gay pride flags, banners, et cetera, or the Black Lives Matter, et cetera. And I would think that the school board should be a little concerned about that. Now, I want to address the issue on the vaccine mandates. I'm certainly not going to give you a legal opinion because I'm, I haven't practiced law for fourteen years. But Biden has no authority from a federal standpoint to mandate any kind of mandates at a state or local level. Whether Kate Brown has the authority through OSHA is certainly a legal question. I personally am not in favor of these vaccine mandates at all. I think you've got a serious problem. I think you've got a serious problem if you try to mandate these vaccines for all the employees. Most of these employees are unions. They have certain contractual rights with them. I think you would run into problems on that. The third thing I want to address is what Mr. Casey addressed. I don't know, he was like five speakers before this. Let's cut to the chase. Black Lives Matter is a political movement, period. So are the gay pride. They have no business in the school district. The school district is supposed to be apolitical, period. And if you, if you don't ban those, the school board is complicit in being political. Those things need to be banned.
Thanks, Michael.
I believe next up we have Stacy Gott.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, Stacy. Start when you're ready.
Dear school board members, my name is Stacy Gott. I'm a Newburgh parent, and I'm also speaking here today on behalf of myself, Michelle McWilliams, Leanne Reese, and Catherine Dudley. We are all school psychologists for the Newburgh School District. We are glad to see that people are talking about students' mental health more than ever before. Because mental health issues are so close to our hearts and profession, we are dismayed by the direction the school board has recently taken. As school psychologists, we have a moral and ethical responsibility to engage in social justice and take anti-racism action. This position and language are endorsed by the National Association for School Psychologists. Statistics show that our LGBTQ students are at a much higher risk for mental health problems, including self-harm and suicide. We know about the negative outcomes for racism for both physical and mental health, for Black, Indigenous, and people of color. We often use words like marginalized to describe these groups. What this truly means is that these students wake up every day knowing they are at higher risk for being bullied, ridiculed, harassed, or even killed because of their skin color or sexual orientation or identity. For too many, it is their lived reality. One of the biggest risk factors for major mental health problems is not having a person students feel they can turn to. Signage helps create emotional safety for our students. It helps to know that here in this place, this person acknowledges you and is here to protect all students. Our students deserve to feel psychologically safe in their environment. For those that want schools to focus purely on academics, know that feeling safe is a prerequisite to learning. These notices are visual aids to show support for students, not to make a political statement. A rainbow doesn't tell anybody how to vote. It's a rainbow. In our view, saying that Black Lives Matter speaks to a universal truth that is not universally acknowledged. The anti-racism resolution our board adopted is a step in the right direction. However, we need your support to continue the work that is just getting started, so that this resolution is not merely words on paper. You have all been sent position statements by the National Association of School Psychologists on these issues, and we hope you read them with a serious intent and with an open heart and open mind. We also encourage each of you to talk to students affected by these policies. Listen to LGBTQ and BIPOC students and staff in our community. Listen to their voices and lived experiences. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Stacy.
Chair Brown, that is the end of our public comments for tonight.
Okay, I thought we had one more there, but we don't, huh?
We were, we were not able to find her. She listed a phone number and it's not listed on our attendees list.
Got it. So we're finished then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for everybody that called in tonight and sharing your your thoughts and your concerns. We appreciate it as a board, and that's the end of our public comment time. We'll move now into the board superintendent comments. We'll start with board comments. Brandy, I'm gonna pick you first tonight.
Great, thank you. Yeah, thank you to everybody who is taking the time to watch our meeting and also who took the time to make comments tonight. It's greatly appreciated. A lot has happened here in the last few weeks in our district, and most notably, of course, is the start of school. And it has been a week of joy and celebration and excitement. When I was dropping off my own children, I watched principals who were welcoming students into buildings, custodians who were holding doors open, and teachers with huge smiles on their faces as they greeted every single student. Students, parents, and staff, they're all excited, and life is feeling just a tiny bit more normal. We see school buses on the roads, kids with backpacks are walking to school, and the exhausting excitement at the end of a long week of school and activities feels normal. As the first few days unfolded, the fear of disruptions was replaced by a strong sense of community, respect, and understanding. This is Newburgh. Thank you to everyone who worked tirelessly for the last eighteen months to make the first day of school happen. In-person learning represents our community's efforts to support what we know is best for our children. We've learned that in-person learning is the best way to connect and educate most students. As a community, we owe it to our children to continue to take safety precautions to protect them and their educators. If we want to keep our school buildings safe and open, we must stay vigilant and actively take precautions to protect everyone. Let this be a shining example of what a community can achieve when we work together for the good of students. This is Newburgh. I would also like to thank our Newburgh Business Community for the beautiful and supportive signs in front of our school buildings, and also our faith community for their appreciation and support of our educators. I'm reminded of the support our staff and students have in the generous donations which are in the consent agenda tonight. Our community leaders are coming together to support our school's fantastic staff, students, and programs. This is Newburgh. I also learned of the abhorrent racist actions by a student in our district. This is only one incident that I learned of this last week. There were others. A homophobic slur said in passing, controversial and distracting clothing meant to enrage and intimidate, rainbows ripped off lockers, and students self-identifying as Confederates. This too is Newburgh. As a community, we cannot turn our backs on the uncomfortable and ugly reality that racism and homophobia are alive and well. I fear that the recent actions of some members of this board are encouraging those who are ill-informed and hope to harm others. As leaders, our words and actions matter, and as of now, these actions are giving the green light to people to openly and proudly display their hate. That is not Newburgh. We have an opportunity to demonstrate our community's resolve against this hateful chaos that has been thrust into our lives. We've been given a chance to channel these feelings of anger and despair into a deeper understanding of all people's dignity and to come closer together as a community. Let us use these challenging times to show the world who we are, who Newburgh is. Let us all rise together, resolute in our love for each other and for our town. This is Newburgh.
Thanks, Brandy. Brian, I've got you next, and after that will be Anes.
I don't have any comments this evening.
Okay, thank you. Anes, you're up.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody that spoke tonight. I really appreciate hearing public comment. While email can get overwhelming with the amount of emails we have been receiving, I appreciate them because I'm hearing concerns, I'm hearing voices, voices that need to be elevated. Yesterday, I was able to attend an event safely masked and everything where I got to hear students, and that to me is the most important. They said, they told us what they wanted us to hear, and that is, keep showing up. Keep elevating our voice, and that is my commitment to the students. There's obviously no trust among us as a board, but the students trust us. And I'm gonna continue being as faithful to them as I can by continuing to show up. That is my duty, to continue to elevate these voices, to not stand for hate. And as someone who has been silenced in this board, in these board meetings, I'm not gonna let that happen to the students. I'm here to be that voice. Keep sending me things you want shared, screenshots. I'm gonna speak up for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Anes. Renee, and then Rebecca after that.
Hi, I just wanna thank everybody too for calling in and taking that time and for all the emails that people are sending in. And I know that this is a challenging time, and there's a, and I agree with a lot of the people of how, why these, again, why these flags need to be removed. And because it is so divisive, and it's obviously clear how it is affecting our community and our schools and our students on both areas, so. And I really enjoyed what we, corresponding with community members and writing emails back and forth, and I'm very thankful for all that. And so keep them coming, and we want to hear from, from everyone. Thanks.
Thanks, Renee. Rebecca?
Hey, it's been great to be able to go for walks around the schools and hear the school buses and hear the children in the playgrounds playing outside. I had the opportunity to go to the in-service day for the first, for the staff on August thirty-first, and it was great to hear Dr. Morlock's inspiring words and to attend a seminar. They had seventy-two classes for the staff members, both elementary and high school, done by our district staff, and it was a great collaborative. I went to a session on how, how to help BIPOC and LGD, LGBTQ plus students in my classroom. And it was very informative, and I just thank all the staff that, that took the time to, to have thoughtful seminars and, and classes that were very important to the staff. And I also want to thank the people who write in. I do have a few points to mention. Several people wrote in asking us to consider being on a panel to, to help determine medical and religious exemptions for teachers. And that really isn't the, the job of the school board. Our job is to make policy, hire and supervise the superintendent, and, and adopt the budget. It's not to get into the operation or the human relationship of the, the human, the HR department of the school board, just, just as an educational matter. And also, we've had some emails that I just wanted to refer the people to the policy J F H K L, and it's the AR that describes what to do when you have a complaint. And that the first matter of the complaint is to go to the teacher or the counselor or the assistant principal directly, and try to work it out between the two of you and come to agreement. And if you don't, can't do that within five days, to then turn to the, the principal of the school. And if you can't do that with, that come to agreement within ten days, then you go to the superintendent. But just so, so we understand the policies, the complaint policy is there to help you solve something at the lowest, lowest place. And also, I, I appreciate getting all the emails. What I would appreciate, I, you know my name, you know my address, my phone number. I would appreciate knowing who you are. Are you a, a teacher of the district? Are you a staff member? Are you a, a parent of, of students in the district? Are you a grandparent? Or are you someone out of the district? It makes a difference to me how, when I read this, who these people, who, who you are, so that I, I can, can understand where you're coming from. So I would appreciate letters with that information, just contact, letting us know a little bit who you are, not just, hi, this is John. That, that, that doesn't give me much contents to work with, so I'd appreciate that little bit of common courtesy to let us know who you are. We're interested in who you are and your voice and want to hear from you. So thank you very much. And Dave, it's good to know you're feeling better.
Thanks, Rebecca. I appreciate that very much.
Oh, I also have one thing. I, I understand I left out a phrase in the Pledge of Allegiance. It was no ill will. I apologize for that. I get sometimes I, I forget things, so I'm sorry.
Rebecca, you don't apologize. You have been awesome on the Pledge of Allegiance for a long time, so you're much appreciated. Thank you. Trevor, you're next.
Yeah, I, I don't have a whole lot to, to say tonight. I, I would just say that, you know, I think everyone's trying to do the, the best that they can, and I'm hopeful, I, I echo some of my fellow directors' comments that you know, the, the, the amount, the degree that the community's engaged on this. I know that this, this is kind of a divisive time, and I'm hopeful that we'll get past this and can work on, you know, a lot more things, but I would encourage people, you know, once we get past this, that, you know, to stay engaged, no matter what the issue is. And, you know, we, we like it. I, I know myself, I've met with parents, I've met with teachers, I've met with students from both sides of the aisle on, on these issues, and you know, if, if you're respectful, if you want to have, you know, a civil conversation and talk about ideas and beliefs and stuff, I, you know, as I have time, you know, I'm, I'm willing to do that. But I'm not working full-time and, and reading the hundreds of emails like Anes alluded to earlier, so please stay engaged. Let's think outside the box on, on these issues and how we're gonna address them as we lower the water level. You know, we're uncovering some big rocks, and, and they are concerning, mental health and, and belonging and and stuff like that. So, you know, we, we talk about what we want and what we don't want, but let's start, you know, as you, you know, send in emails and start talking about the issues that we're facing and facing our schools, you know, start coming up with with different solutions and ideas that, that's gonna help us move forward, not just with this issue, but, you know, the others. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Trevor. Guess I'm up here. I thought about what I wanted to say tonight, and this would be to the community, all the people have written in. We've had lots, lots and lots and lots. And you can tell tonight in our public comments that we had, you know, the, the whole range of emotions calling in on different subjects. I would just like to say, even though this school board is struggling to see eye to eye, and the school board is frustrated with each other, there's one thing I do know. I do know that this current school board, all seven of us care deeply about students. We may do it in our own way, and we may not agree on, on how to get there, but I can tell you, after working in the schools for twenty years and coaching forever here in this town, that these seven, six people and myself care deeply about the students. Staff members, every member of this board believes all students matter. We are, they are very important. A difference of opinion here and how things happen does not change how we all feel. A difference of opinion here and how things happen does not change how we all feel towards our students, staff and parents. We do disagree and we do vote how we feel is best to proceed and we don't always agree. And it's not always pretty, but we still care about every student. Like this board and how we vote reflects the many different opinions and concerns with you and the entire community. This is a hard one. Let's listen and understand more. We must stop the hate and harsh language and the attacks. Every person of this board has been attacked on jobs, loss of jobs, loss of income from not students, but adults out in our community. If we're really gonna talk about healing, we're gonna talk about every person, then we need to stop the hate, all the hate. Every bit of the hate. There are many paths for all of us. For some of us, it's one way. For others, it's another. Good luck to you and your chosen path. I would say, uh, you know, for each community member in board meeting, uh, there are many students who fall on both sides of the current political issues. For every student who doesn't feel safe in one way, there's another student that doesn't feel safe in another way. And I know for myself, I'm concerned about every student, always have been. And, uh, how we get there is different. Uh, you as a community, when you call into us, call in with, uh, not just your opinion, but maybe some, some actual answers. So that's my, my comments tonight. I appreciate everybody on this board. I know it's a tough time. I appreciate you and I, I do know that, the, that all seven of us deeply care about kids and so uh, if we don't go anywhere else tonight with our, our thoughts as we move away from each other and our frustrations, uh, I appreciate that about each and every one of you. So thanks for caring about, about our students. So, um, I'm gonna stop there. One quick announcement, Joe, and then you're up. September twenty-second, I should have done this at the end of the public comments. Uh, we did this once before, but we've had such an onslaught of, uh, people wanting to call in. We haven't had very many school board meetings, so it's not like we're trying to not get everybody in. We will have a seven to nine Zoom meeting, so call in twenty-four hours in advance. On September twenty-second, it will be a special meeting for public comments, two minutes, so we can get as many people in as possible. We just haven't had time to get this, this in yet. Um, so this will be a night for you to call in, have two minutes. Again, we'd like everybody to be civil, uh, but, but come with your concerns. Uh, there will be no regular, uh, we'll do the pledge of allegiance with Rebecca and then we're gonna go right into it. And so we're hoping we can, uh, get as many people in as possible that night. If you do the math, that's a, a two hours. We should be able to, with the transition, you can tell it's not, not as easy on Zoom. But we should be able to get into that, you know, fifty range of people calling in. And so it'll be a great night for, uh, a lot of people who have been frustrated, uh, to not talk, uh, to us, to talk that night. So that'll be the twenty-second, seven to nine. Make sure you call in, uh, by seven on Monday, the twenty-first. Joe, you're up.
There before we move, I have a quick comment on that twenty-second. Um, in the future, if possible, I would like to be, uh, notified or if we could get a poll of when a date works. Given that I do have a full-time job aside of this, um, sometimes scheduling can be hard, so it would be appreciative in the future, we can all weigh in on what day we choose.
Yeah, and as I'm sorry about that, we did it in the agenda meeting with, uh, uh, Dr. Morlock and, and Brian and I. We just really wanted to get one in in September, so I apologize for the, the tough thing on the schedule. I think it's something that, uh, you know, we wouldn't throw this in there if we didn't know that we really needed to do it. So again, apologize for the, you know, the schedule for you and everybody else. Um, I'm hoping we can get at least fifty people calling that night and that'll help us to, to start getting people, uh, uh, heard out there, so.
Yeah, I wanna get people heard too, so.
Thanks Anas, I appreciate your comment though. Next time, we will definitely get some more advanced notice on it, so. Dr. Joe, are you ready?
I am. I was just letting that conversation finish. All right, uh, thank you. I'll make this fairly quick. I know we're trying to move along, but I do have a few thank yous and some other things I wanted to discuss, so. Uh, first, a huge shout out to each and every employee of the district. Um, your efforts have not gone unnoticed. Uh, we are entering the third year of a global pandemic affected school year. Um, I know I, I talked to somebody, uh, just yesterday and they said, boy, it feels like it's already May. I feel like I've been going so long and it's been less than a week because we're a little bit out of shape uh, of doing teaching in the way we have done it for years. And so people are getting back into shape. I know that, um, we are still scrambling to uh, get some things done, but it's an almost normal launch of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So I did wanna acknowledge all the hard work of every single employee. Every person here is just doing, uh, an amazing job trying to get this, get this bird off the ground and, and do it safely for all of our students. Um, our professional development week, I was glad that you mentioned that Rebecca earlier, uh, seventy-two sessions. We had dozens of things, um, in, you know, math and reading strategies. We had all of our teachers on special assignment who do some training, doing those. We had other uh, teachers, uh, doing presentations. And so it was really, it was quite a day. Uh, they got to, uh, listen to me yap at them for about twenty minutes and then they could escape that and go, uh, to multiple sessions. And so it was a, a nice way for our uh, staff to get started. Um, also, I'd like to acknowledge, uh, Pollinate Flowers for delivering bouquets to every school. I think they were donated by a group called Newburgh Allies. Uh, they went to every, uh, school office. They just started to show up. I didn't know they were coming and so they were beautiful. So I did wanna acknowledge that. Uh, one of our local businesses, uh, brightening, uh, the beginning of our school year, so thank you to them. Uh, also, thank you to everybody for your patience as we get going. We know we've had some transportation things that are still working out. Um, you know, lots of things happening. I think you've probably seen in the news that, uh, there is a driver shortage. Uh, we're doing pretty well, but we've had, uh, a few, uh, things go a little haywire, so we're taking care of those as well as possible. We'll continue to update you uh, as we know more and, uh, each day gets a little bit better as we get adjusted to, uh, a new schedule. So, uh, any of those concerns, of course, you can always contact, uh, our, your school and we'll take care of, uh, you know, trying to do what we can do for that. We, uh, the first few days gone relatively well. We've had a few, uh, COVID-related issues that some of you've been contacted by. Um, I have been to every school. Uh, the masks, uh, don't appear to be an issue. The staff and the students are all happy to be back in person. Um, lots of exhaustion, as I said before, as we get back into the rhythm, uh, we're all doing this, you know, getting ourselves up, getting kids either on the bus or delivered to school, then get ourselves to work. So there's quite a bit of happening, just getting back into that rhythm. Uh, we are still staffing some positions. Uh, we are not immune to the, um, staffing challenges, although I think we've had a little bit better luck uh, than some, uh, organizations. For those of you fourteen and fifteen-year-olds, it looks like there are a few places in town that are hiring, uh, fast food for fifteen dollars an hour, which seems like a pot of gold for when I was, uh, about that age, trying to score a job at the local grocery store, bagging groceries. So, uh, anyway, still, um, finishing up some of those. Uh, our bond projects also are going very well. We're still in the design and what they call value engineering. So value engineering is, you know, finding ways to make sure that what we design, uh, fits within the budget that we have determined, uh, based upon uh, our bond management team. So we've been working on all those before we get to, uh, a space where we'll have our design documents. Uh, we have hired, as some of you, most of you may know, we hired, uh, both Pence Construction and Skanska Construction. They are our CMGC partners. Uh, they've already gotten started since, uh, the vote that we had, uh, at the board meeting, the last meeting that we had a vote. They've already been underway and working with our, uh, consultants and with our architects and with our construction management firm, so they jumped right in, um, and it's been great to work with those two very professional organizations. Very happy to, to have them on. And then finally, I do want to acknowledge, uh, this, uh, terrible student incident, which has been widely broadcast, uh, via media. The, um, slave trade chat transcript that will, that included, uh, one or more students, uh, at Newbrook High School. I do want to remind you all that student safety is our number one priority. Uh, Principal Arien did put out a message today, uh, to families. We are taking it seriously. Uh, there is a detailed process for investigation and discipline and that is being followed. Uh, I think the, the thing that's maybe most frustrating for people is that we are not going to inform the public, including the board, uh, of what will be the final decision of the discipline of that student, that is private information, uh, for that student. You would only learn about it, uh, at the board level if it were come to an appeal, if they were going to appeal our decision at the school level, but I do want people to know that we are investigating, uh, we are, we'll go through a disciplinary process if that's necessary, but we won't announce what that is. And I know that that sometimes is frustrating because people wanna have all the information. Um, but we are, uh, working on that actively. Um, it is a terrible thing. It did start, uh, out in Michigan, as most of you, uh, may know, uh, and has found its way here somehow. So, uh, we are working on that. We are taking it seriously. Um, and we will, uh, continue the investigation and deal with discipline, um, as necessary. And that's what I have for you.
Also, uh, that was a really good meeting earlier, uh, about Dundee project. That was, they, that was really well done. Uh, we'll move, uh, move into the agenda. I'm gonna go ahead and read that. Um, this one's pretty exciting. This is kinda fun. We can have some fun for a change. Uh, Brandy commented on this earlier and, uh, she's definitely right. I saw this and I was like, wow. You know, we, we, uh, A is prove the minutes from the executive session on August tenth, uh, that's part of this. B is donations. Um, we've always been blessed in Newburgh with ADAC. And, and, and then I'm not sure when it came along, it's the Austin Family Foundation, but they have been an amazing supporters of Newburgh in general, uh, but for sure the school district. And so, um, I think all of us need to, to kinda hold on to your chair here. I, I know you've read your board packet, but this is amazing. The Austin Family Foundation donated fifty thousand dollars to the Wellness Center at Newburgh High School. Fifty thousand dollars. The Austin Family Foundation also donated fifty thousand dollars for hands-on CTE learning support at Newburgh High School. These are huge donations. The third one, Austin Family Foundation donated one hundred thousand dollars to CTE Fridays at Catalyst High School. Tim Graham, you gotta be excited. That's such an amazing gift from, uh, the Austin Family Foundation. I think if any of us have time, please write a note or, uh, a thank you, uh, to the Austin Family Foundation, uh, and how much we appreciate them. And, and they've given much, uh, more throughout, even just this year. So thank you so much to, to them. Uh, the Lowy, uh, Maresh Memorial Reading Fund, uh, a thousand dollar donation to, to Dundee Elementary. Uh, Reid, that's awesome for you guys out there. That's great. We just appreciate the generosity in the, in this, in the school district. Um, this number C is personal recommendations, accept licensed probationary contracts. Um, I had nineteen that I could identify, three to Newburgh High School, five to Edwards, two to CB, two to Mountain View, two to John and Austin, one to Crater, and two to Ewan Young. So lots of, uh, new people there. Accepting licensed temporary contracts. Uh, Dave Sanders is back at Mountain View, or, or, uh, CB. Good job, Dave. Uh, accept licensed temporary contracts, accept license resignations. Always wanna read these. These are people who have invested in our school district. Uh, Veronica Burgos, teacher at Mountain View Middle School. Monica or Mon- Mona Cahill, teacher at Edwards Elementary School. And Matthew Vanderwall, teacher at Maple Rush Elementary School. Uh, good luck in your next venture. Thank you very much. Number D is a surplus designation. Policy DN dash A R states, property that is no longer needed within the district shall be listed and declared surplus by the board. Uh, the following items are designated as surplus and will be listed for sale or disposal. Uh, this happens to be two Nobles Concord carpet machines that no longer work for disposal. Uh, working in the district as long as I did, I can, we run stuff into the ground. We don't throw it away unless it's, it's done. So, it's, that's how it, it works. So, is there a, uh, motion to, uh, for the consent agenda?
I'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Thank you very much. Uh, do a vote, all vote in favor, say, or raise your hand, say aye. Seven zero. Thank you very much, you guys. Again, thanks to the Austin Family Foundation. That's amazing. Um, so with that said, we'll move on into reports and presentations. Uh, Nikki Fowler has a busy night. And her first one, it's monthly financial report. Uh, thank you, Nikki.
Okay, I'll start with, uh, I think Jen sent out an updated August um, report to you. I found a, a formula error in it, so I wanna focus on that one. That's the corrected page. As you can tell by looking at these, there hasn't been a lot going on yet in the month of July and August that we're reporting on, because we haven't had a full payroll, um, in the system yet, so there is not much spending to talk about here yet. Um, but what I would wanna highlight is the difference in the SSF between, um, what was budgeted, at the thirty million, nine hundred thousand, um, and our current estimate is about a twenty-nine, five hundred thousand. So we have a significant change in that. Just based on the updates and based on the ADM and everything. So we'll be watching that closely, um, as we move forward through the year and get our first, uh, collection to ODE at the first of October. Um, with where we're standing now, with very little in the system, our income balance looks like ten point six million. But there is not, um, you know, we have our, our payroll encumbered and things like that, but every day expenses aren't in there. So there's a lot of spending to be had with that balance. Hold on just a sec. Okay, just had to get rid of some back, background noise. Um, were there any questions on these numbers that I presented here? On the financial statements?
Nikki, I had a quick question. It's, um, something I noticed and then it kind of lent into more questions. So, um, on the general fund expenditures for August, uh, which is page, I think fourteen in our packet, um, line, under total instruction, oh, well, it's the second part down, line twenty-two, ten, um, improve instructional, I think services maybe. Um, we are, you know, negative eighty-six percent over spent in that. Is that correct? And if it is, what did, why? And, and what did we do with that money?
Well, right now, it looks like, um, in there, we have, uh, some salaries encumbered. But we'll have to go back into that. I don't know specifically, just from looking at that number, who the bodies are. Um, but a lot of the charges in those areas um, end up moving towards grants to get expended out against grants and things like that as we move through the year. So I can look up those details and email them to you for specifics.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry for not getting that to you ahead of time.
Yeah, yeah, no problem, no problem. Anything else? On those, um, on the, also on the page with the other funds, you'll start to see, and this is where it has the federal grants, the debt services and capital projects. You'll start to notice more and more spending in the capital project funds as we move forward through the bond process. And so right now, we've got, um, looks like we are projected through the end of the year by five point three million. But we're just starting to split. There's plenty of other things that are coming in, um, with our building throughout this year. So you'll see that number grow significantly as we move through, um, the plan and everything with that brick and cornerstone and now Pence, um, and Skanska, so. Um, that's about all I really, there isn't too much in it right now, like I said before. Uh, do they have any questions, more questions on those ones?
Do we have a sense of our enrollment numbers yet?
Um, we haven't had, we've, we have a kind of count right now. Um, we're only in the second week. It appears we're down a little bit. Um, but we need to wait a little bit longer to see where those numbers end up.
Down a little bit, over our estimate or down a little bit over the previous year?
Um, down, down a little bit from the estimate that I use for budgeting.
Hey Nikki, when do you think we'll have a, a better feel for that?
Uh, well, the first official, say ADM collection that goes to ODE is due October first. Um, we do watch those numbers all throughout the first, you know, several weeks of school um, to see where movement is, see if, um, how many kids, um, see how many more records requests that we receive. Lots of those things come in delayed. Our student isn't there, but we don't know if they've actually moved, if they're just, you know, if they're ill or something else is going on. So it usually takes the first several weeks before feeling pretty confident about our numbers, so, um, I would say probably. I would say probably numbers next week or the week after, we'll, we'll feel a little bit better about the accuracy of them, you know, as we start the movement, as we see all the movement come through. So.
Thanks, Nikki.
Everybody good on that one? Sounds like it. Thank you very much, Nikki. But you don't get a break because now you have to go into staff vaccination mandates.
Okay, well, I will see if I can pull up that presentation here and get it going. Just a second, unless Joe, did you want to run that one again? Do you have it up or do you want me to bring it up?
I don't have it up yet, but I can certainly do so if you need me to.
I have it. I can, hold on just a sec.
Have you got it, Nikki? We see you up on the screen.
I'm sorry about that. I pulled that.
You pulled a joke. I know. You were gonna say it.
I was, I was going to, but I stopped myself.
Go ahead. I'll mute myself.
Okay, so I'll go through this presentation. I'm gonna go over the black and white, the basics of it. And I also have Lisa Freely here from Alameda SD, who's our attorney that we work with through them to help support or help answer any questions that might come up. So a few of the things I'll be reviewing is the mandate background, some definitions. The district process that we're using at this point, how we're stepping through things. Explain a little bit about the two exceptions, medical exception and the religious exception. And then a little time for some questions. So for background information, all this information can be found under the OAR three 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 dash zero one nine dash one zero three zero. So you can go directly there to find the details. Within that, they define a few things for us. And these few things here, I think, are a little more important than what you're looking for, but they have other definitions there as well that might be helpful. So a fully vaccinated person means having received both doses of a two-dose COVID vaccine or one dose of the single-dose vaccine. And at least fourteen days have passed since the individual's final dose of that vaccine. So when we're talking about the deadline being fully vaccinated, this is what we're looking for. A medical exception means that an individual has a physical or mental impairment that prevents the individual from receiving a COVID nineteen vaccination. A religious exception means that an individual has a sincerely held religious belief that prevents the individual from receiving a vaccination. So these are just some of the basic definitions within that OAR. Also in the OAR, it talks about the bottom line. So after October eighteenth, teachers, school staff and volunteers may not teach, work, learn, study, assist, observe or volunteer out of school unless they are fully vaccinated or have provided documentation of a medical or religious exception. Goes on to say, a school may not employ contract with or accept the volunteer services of teachers, school staff or volunteers who are teaching, working, learning, studying, assisting, observing or volunteering at a school unless the teachers or school staff are fully vaccinated against COVID nineteen or have a documented medical or religious exception. So these are straight out of the OAR and what the, the intent is of that. So far as our process at Newburgh, we started out with sending out a basic survey to all employees. We needed to learn where everybody was and where they stood in order to be able to move forward in the process. So we, we asked who had been back vaccinated, who intended to be vaccinated if they had not been already. Who planned to submit a request for an exception and those who plan to refuse the vaccine and will not request an exception. Those who have been vaccinated are required to submit proof of vaccination as outlined in the OAR. And we're collecting that, we're collecting pictures for taking copies and keeping hard copies of all of that. Because that is required to have on file for the next two years at this point. Those who indicate that they intend to get vaccinated will share the dates and types of vaccination so we can determine if they're in compliance as of, as of October eighteenth. At this time, an employee would need to receive the Johnson and Johnson vaccine to be compliant by the eighteenth. So it makes a difference which vaccine they get. So now if they go and get a Moderna, they would not be fully vaccinated by that deadline. And we'd be looking at a gap in time past that before they could come to back to the building. This is just a snippet out of the MOU with our classified union. We worked with them to try to clearly outline the expectations that come from the OAR. And it went to their group, to their members, and this MOU was passed. So what we did here is we put out various timeline or deadlines. So by September thirteenth, by yesterday, we needed a lot of information. So employees were supposed to respond to that survey. And let us know if they were going for, if they were going to request an exception, which exception. And then also proof of vaccination on or before October fourteenth. So it just really clearly outlines those dates because as we move forward to the eighteenth, we have a lot of steps in HR that we have to perform. So we need that information ahead of time. So this was just straight out of their agreement. A second. There it goes. Okay. So district HR staff will begin for, for those employees who have requested an exception, regardless of whether it's a medical or religious exception, that triggers an interactive process, which means we have an individual conversation with each one of those employees. Invite them in the office and go over the information for either exception. So we're gonna have a very, very black and white questionnaire, basic questions gathering information. So this process will utilize a committee comprised of HR staff and directors. And that's because it is, you know, it's a, it's a heavy lift. So there's quite a few people involved. So we're kind of splitting that up a little bit. The district will work individually with employees to ensure that all individual situations are evaluated and resolved in the best interest of students, staff and the individual as is in compliance with the OAR. Let's see, this process is important because an accommodation is not limited to what may be requested by the employee. We'll talk about accommodations that the employee might, might like. An additional information may be determined, may, may be needed to determine if an accommodation is an undue hardship for the employer or if an employer would pose a direct threat in the workplace, even after other safety measures have been implemented. So, so we'll have that conversation with each employee and gather the information. Here is a basic, is, is the definition straight out of the OAR? Is what a medical exception is and what needs to be provided to, to have that considered? I won't read this word for word for you, but specifically request certifying, having a doctor, medical provider, that's a specialist in the appropriate area, certifying the individual has a physical or mental impairment. And this would be the same process we would use in determining, you know, ADA compliance or FMLA. We would require this kind of information. The religious exception, this is the exact language it comes out of the OAR as well. So it, it allows the employer to ask a few more questions about the exception request, just to gather more information. Both of the exceptions have to be submitted on the OHA form. They made up the documentation that everybody uses. So it's real consistent. Anywhere you go, it's going to be the same form, same questions asked, whether you're asking for the religious exception here or any other school district. So that's our basic process at this point. Are there any questions?
Nikki, how many staff are, at this point, just roughly, are you talking about that would be going for exceptions? Or not taking the exceptions?
Approximately around fifty, and we still have a handful of folks that did not respond at all to the survey.
So let's say thirty of those are religious and twenty are medical. How do you? If somebody, I mean, there's not much you can do to question somebody's faith. So if they are granted the religious exception, then what would be the next move?
In both cases, whether it's medical or the religious exception, we would go through as part of the interview and interactive process with them. We're gonna ask a lot of questions about their workday and their interaction, their contact with students, their social distancing, all of those sorts of things. And so we would, in our committee, consider whether any of the accommodations that we request, whether that ultimately will keep students and staff safe. And then upon that decision, then we would let them know, because they, they can have a qualifying exception. But the next step is, is if we have enough, if the accommodations in turn will keep them safe and students safe. So we can say their exception, but that does not necessarily mean that we can keep them safe in the building or keep the students safe in the building. So those are two different questions. And we'll decide that as we gain all the information. So at this point, I wouldn't have a, I wouldn't want to guess how that looks, because we need to ask everybody how their day goes. How, you know, how they work with students, how their interaction is all day long in order to make that determination.
So if you're talking about somebody and how their day goes, I mean, all of our teachers and head assistants are around kids. So I mean, they can't stand twenty feet away with a wall between them. School districts have gone to N ninety-five mask with a weekly testing for people who get the exceptions. Is that something that we would consider?
That could be one of the considerations. And KN ninety-five mask with the face shield, we could consider. We could consider have a plexiglass around their desk. So they can, if a student comes to the desk, there's an extra barrier. One of the other concerns that have been brought up in, in our various trainings, I mean, we've there's been many, many things that we have attended as an HR group. So just, you know, eating in the staff room, because everybody has their mask on. One of the accommodations may be that you need to eat in a different space, because that's the most risky space, because the because COVID is airborne. That's the biggest way to transmit. So we would have, there's various accommodations that we could request of an employee in order to accommodate them coming into the building. But then those would have to be followed to a T. Because if they're not following them, then they're putting staff and students at risk. And so we need to be very clear about that.
So we're, we're letting five thousand kids or forty-six hundred kids come to school wearing a dollar, two-dollar mask, for the most part, from Fred Meyer. And they're not vaccinated. And yet we could have staff who, who do not take the vaccine could have an N ninety-five mask, which is far more efficient, and do weekly testing. And then we don't have to fire anybody. I mean, I just don't even see why I should do that. I mean, I can see right now where we're at with the, with the stuff. I just went through this. I just had it for almost a month. So I, I get this, the, the seriousness of it. But if we're really saying that we want to be a healthy school district, we've got a, I mean, but they can wear an N ninety-five mask and get weekly tested. So we know that they don't have COVID and they can be doing their job until this whole thing gets, you know, through, whether it's a week or six months. I just don't want to see us not do what other districts are doing. They're doing everything they can to keep their employees. I, I don't want us to to just kind of go down the middle of the road, what we're doing on this mandate and lose. I've talked to teachers, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five-year veteran in our school that really don't want to lose their job. And it's, it's, it's really important that we do everything we can. If we just make an accommodation, there's not very many things you can do in our district where you're not around other people. I get the lunchroom scenario, when people take off their masks, the teachers, you know, little things like that make total sense till we can work through this thing. But I know other districts have gone to the N ninety-five and the weekly testing and I just think that's a really good option.
The weekly testing piece, we, we have looked into that. The one that is being offered for, for free, so the districts could actually manage it. And you are not getting results for a week and a half. So it's an at-home test. I'd have to rely on people to take them themselves, pay the postage, get it in the mail, get it in order to get a result a week and a half later. So it doesn't seem like an effective way to monitor, because by the time you get the result that any employee, whether it's a teacher or classified, any staff, would have been with students for another full week. So I don't, unless we're paying a lot of money for a company to come in and do end up, you know, tests that can have results in fifteen minutes. That is not a real realistic way to stay on top of it. But certainly the mask and the plexi and different things like that, that can be. But again, I mean, we need to go through and you know, go through the process. That's what the that interactive process is. And that's why we're required to do it is to gather all the data specifics about each employee and their work with students. So
I, I, my last thing is I would just think any teacher that's twenty-five years in, who has devoted all that time to us would, would jump through an extra hoop to get tested. And I know when I got tested, I had my results within forty-eight hours. And that was at Providence Newburgh Hospital. So I think we can figure that, that piece out. And I think these, these staff members would understand how serious it is they get these results, even they had to even pay for it themselves. It's better than losing their job in Newburgh School District. So I hope we, we really look at that piece very strongly when we're making these exceptions.
Nikki, I've got a quick question regarding our unions. And I want to say thank you to both unions, first of all, for their work with the district on this. And, and I see that we have a classified union MOU. Is there not a teachers' union MOU? And if not, can you talk a little bit about what that process was like?
The teachers' one is in process right now. It just has not been completed. We meet again on Thursday. We had worked with them on, on, you know, different the MOUs around the mask and everything and COVID, but not around the vaccine piece, because that wasn't quite in place at the time. The M O Us around the mask and everything and COVID, but not around the vaccine piece because that wasn't quite in place at the time. Put everything else in place. So now we're discussing the vaccination piece specifically, so. I'm hoping we're, we get pretty far with it on Thursday. Um, and that's, that's just where we are with that one. We're a little bit, um, a little bit slower on that one than we were with the classified. That we have part of it in place already, so.
Thank you.
Nikki, uh, can you speak to how requests for religious exemptions will be educated?
Um, in the the same way we have basics, just like the medical one, we invite people in. We will ask, we can ask specific questions uh, about that and ask them to provide. How, information as to how the religious exemption relates to vaccines specifically. Um, and that is eligible underneath the law to do that. So it isn't necessarily. It takes more information than just checking the box and saying I'm requesting a religious exception. The way it's written, there's a little more information that we can require.
Sure, and who who will be judging those requests and on what basis will they be judged?
Those requests will come in with for our, like we spoke about before, the interactive process, and so we have a committee, so. H R staff and directors. Will be doing the interviews, so it's not just the one-on-one thing. Um, and then we'll go over the information that we received and we'll make that decision.
And what are the standards that a religious exemption would need to meet to be? Under that process that you've laid out to qualify?
The standard is, well. As we talked about in the O A R, when you look at that, it talks about um, being able to tie. The religious exception to the vaccine piece, and so some of them specifically. We'll talk about, for an example, some of them might specifically talk about. Not wanting to use um, anything that's fetal related or anything like that. And so you're talking about a specific vaccine, um, because Johnson and Johnson would be the vaccine that would fall underneath that. Whereas the other ones may not because they don't use that. Um, so that's how we would kind of go through and look at the details of each one.
But I guess she's still haven't told me what they would have to demonstrate in their request for religious. Exception. What the the standard that they would need to write. And that's incredibly subjected. I'm just curious how you are going to judge somebody's religious. Belief in a way that is constitutionally valid.
Well, when you look at the the language in the O A R. The snippet I showed a few slides back, it talks about a sincerely held belief. Um, and so it is, I do agree, it is subjective, and so that's why at this point in time. We are just, we are looking and we'll have to go through the process of interviewing those employees. Um, and just learning from them.
And is there a appeals process?
Yes. So the appeals process would be to that superintendent. So yeah, if they, if somebody wanted to appeal the um, decision of the committee, then they would appeal to the superintendent.
And is there additional, are there any additional appeal levels above the superintendent in this case?
Um, I think eventually it could go to the board, yes.
Joe, can you confirm that?
Yeah, any administrative decision that comes as superintendent for a decision can eventually be appealed to the board. So if if they don't like the decision of a committee is the same thing in a. In a um. In a complaint process, if it comes through that. They would go through the committee, would come through, uh, if they want to appeal that, appeal to me, eventually they would appeal to the board.
And would they be terminated prior to that appeals process being fully run through?
They be terminated? No.
So while they're still appealing, they would not be, they would not have their employment terminated. Is that correct?
They would not be terminated, that's correct, because the exception, the exception is about that, right? So it's. Um, they may be on leave, they may be on something else, or they may be. All in along with the protocols that put in place, but that's, they would not be terminated before they would meet with the board now. They would not be terminated and then come to the board to appeal the termination. They would come to the board to appeal the decision of the exception.
And you mentioned they'd be placed on leave. Would that be paid leave? Like, what would the details of that be?
Uh, most likely be unpaid leave. But I think that we'd actually be able to get through that.
How long could the appeals process take?
It doesn't have to take that long. Well, we've got them in, Nikki, you remind me how many you've got scheduled right now.
Oh, as far as the exception piece, how many?
Right, so we've got about, we've got about fifty of those under schedule for this week. Yeah.
Well, fifty over the next couple weeks.
Right, so we've got them all scheduled now so we can get through this process, so if we were needed to go to an appeal. Of some kind, if the exceptions were denied, that would give them enough time to do all those and still meet the October eighteen deadline. That's why we're doing all of these exceptions now.
Hey Nikki, I think Ty Smith, Tyler, did you have a question? I had saw your hand up.
Nikki, Chair Brown, if you wanted to add some suggestions for the staff.
Point of order, I. He is not a director, he's not allowed to to speak in the meeting, is he?
I didn't know he was gonna be in this meeting.
I believe a board member. The board, uh, the board member could ask our board attorney for his opinion on something.
Right, but how did, I didn't even know he was to be here.
Yes, and 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 where, where, how did he know to be here?
I called him. I wanted him here at a time when we have something like this that's super important. We're talking about firing.
Okay, okay, when are you going to start including the rest of the board members on this decision?
He is our board attorney, he's gonna be.
But he's only communicating with you.
No, I just asked him to be here because of this kind of stuff right here, so we can get.
Are you paying him, Dave? Are you paying him personally or just costing taxpayers money?
I think you heard that a couple of weeks ago, works for the Newburgh School District.
We were informed as the board. And now you're making the taxpayers pay for it, just so everybody's clear on that. And you're the only person that we know of who's communicating with him.
On that, I didn't communicate except just be at the meeting. And you're being rude to our board attorney right now.
But I'm, he, I'm sure he's not here for free. I'm sure he's charging us for his time.
We've hired a board attorney, and yes, we pay for attorneys, just like any client would. And the board chair requested he be here. I don't see what the problem is.
The problem is that the rest of the board was not notified. And I can't see that he is on, was on the meeting and that to ha- to have him. Be able to speak during the meeting without. Uh, awareness of of this situation is is not building good teamwork.
Or consideration for the fact that Rebecca cannot see.
What was that?
I said, or consideration for the fact that you cannot see, so you wouldn't have known that he was on here.
You just said you didn't know, and that is, I mean, it's the same thing. We have a board attorney. Why would we not want him at a meeting like this when we're talking about? The future employment of our employees in the school district, that's what I'm most concerned about.
Well, I. You, it's a very good concern. It would have been very nice to you email us. To let us know what you have done.
He was also illegally retained in violation of public meeting law, so it's very much questionable if he actually represents. The board at all. He certainly doesn't represent me. I've never met with him. I've never spoken with him. And I have no idea what his views on anything are, quite honestly, because I have been completely shut out of the process, as has Director Pyros and Director Penya.
And Tyler speak.
Well, I I would like to say one thing, and that is at the last meeting when we hired him, Brandy, you said that you were going to to reach out to him.
I have not responded to him because he's illegally retained. I'm not going to touch that with a ten-foot pole. I, because I'm not going to be personally responsible for any of his legal fees.
He wasn't illegally retained. We retained him with a valid vote of the board. We're allowed to hire.
Violation of public meeting law, and exactly why you did it, because you knew that it would be outrageous and an illegal action, and you did it anyway.
No, I hired him because I wanted to have legal advice because we were discussing legal issues. Any reasonable person would hire an attorney when they're dealing with legal issues.
Which is why we had a legal advice at that meeting, Brian, and you knew it.
All right, can we move on?
Yeah, can Tyler speak now?
No, I do not feel that Tyler should speak.
And why is that?
Because, because we were not notified ahead of time of his presence and his reasons for being here. If Dave had notified us ahead of time, we could have either said yes. Or at least been aware of the situation, but this, but this. Lack of communication between the the board chair and the mo- rest of the board members. Were you aware he was coming?
I believe that Joe was aware that he was going to be there, and so did, um.
So you knew Renee, so you knew he was gonna be here, because you said Joe knew.
Yeah, Joe and Jennifer knew.
And did you know Renee?
Yes, well, I assumed he would be because he should be at all of our meetings. I know I asked Joe if he could be at all of our meetings. Because he's our lawyer and he's gonna be.
So do you want the, our pace lawyers to also be here?
Talking about legal things, we should have somebody so it clears up all the stuff so we can have it all out and open. If this is legal or not.
But Mr. Smith, do you practice legal educational law? What, what, what is even your, your area of expertise in law?
Well, I I can start giving some advice and doing that if you want me to, because.
No, I don't want you to.
This is what I'm here for, is to give you guys legal advice if you want.
Education law. Do you practice educational law? Do you practice educational law?
I, I practice civil rights law, which is what this is, so if you want advice about. Vaccines and school boards, that's what I do.
We can't hear you, Brandy.
I know, I'm just shaking my head because it's not what you do. You do not, you're not an attorney who practices civil law representing school districts or teachers' unions. So I have no idea why you're here, other than to cause the exact kind of chaos that is happening right now.
I'm sorry, are you suggesting he's not legally a lawyer in the state of Oregon?
I'm sure he's an attorney of some sort, but he's certainly not a specialist in this area.
I didn't know that you were qualified to judge the credentials of attorneys.
I also didn't know that you were, Brian.
And he stated he's not an educational lawyer.
So we're back to the the starting point here where. We have an attorney that would be at board meetings. And it's with all the legal things that we're dealing with, and this isn't flags right now. We're talking about, let's get back to what we're talking about right now. We're talking about our employees in the school district. Regardless of our differences. We need to know every option available to retain our employees in this school district, if possible, with the mandate that's been thrown down. And this is something that Attorney Tyler Smith can do. And I would like everybody to just be a whole lot more respectful of somebody who's coming into our meeting and trying to help us. And.
Chair Brown, I wish you would be more respectful of letting the rest of the board know your plans. That's, that is what I'm upset about, is that we are not included in your decisions. We, we are not notified about this. I did not realize you assumed. Or that Renee assumed that Tyler was going to be here at every meeting. Because that's going to be insured, that's going to be adding three hundred dollars an hour. That tonight's going to be how mu- how long of meeting.
When we have a meeting of this magnitude, though, he won't be at every meeting, like he won't be at the executive or the the work session next two weeks. Uh, won't be at the 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 public comment meeting, but when we're in a meeting like this. We absolutely need legal advice right now while we're sitting here talking to Dr. Joe and Nikki Fowler.
But we, but.
Please, so whether or not.
Why don't you, you use the pace, these lawyers?
There's professional advice on this so we can help our employees, and I will promise you tomorrow morning. Whatever I'm thinking for one day or the next week, Rebecca, I agree, I'll send out emails to you guys all the time so you know what's going on.
Thank you.
A month with with COVID, and I apologize for not communicating better, so I don't want to leave you in the dark on that. But I do want to, besides us seven, I really want to look at. Uh, how we're looking down the road. I know our district's in a, in a tough spot with the mandate from the governor. And and there's districts all around the state doing different things, and if there's anything we can do to help our employees. Regardless of how we all feel about each other, I'm all for that right now, and this is legal. Uh, and I think tonight, Dr. Joe and Nikki Fowler need to hear, and Derek Brown, whoever's going to be on that committee. Uh, this is good information for them, so we make the right decision. We're coming up on this thing. Uh, in just over thirty days, where again, we have people have been in this district for a long time. Who don't want to lose their jobs. They want to find out everything they can, and if Tyler Smith can help us do that, let's let him help us do that. And I will communicate with you. He will not be at the twenty-second meeting or the twenty-eighth meeting. Uh, but I would tell you right now, um, uh, depending on what issues we're dealing with in October, I'm not sure the date yet of that meeting. Uh, but if we're dealing with big issues like this, which I assume we would be. Uh, we'll be coming up on the the timeframe that he would be at that meeting, so there you go for our next, uh. Uh, three times we get together. Uh, I'll just verbally say that, but I'll send that to you in an email also.
Where's our pace attorney?
What's that?
Where's our pace attorney?
Tonight, actually, we have Lisa Fraley from W E S D, who is one of our attorneys we work with quite a bit, so she is actually uh, here with us to. Answer any other questions you may have.
Perfect, thank you, Dr. Morlock.
I have a question for Nikki. Just to clarify, Nikki, you did say that this mandate. Has to be followed by all districts, correct? It's not just something that is imposed on us?
Right, it's a state, it's an O H A mandate. Um, so all districts, um. All districts have to deal with it. You know, districts are doing different things and different levels, um. And they're all working through it at the same time, even as we're working through it, we're working, we're reaching out to our peers of other districts and being sure that we're. Um, looking at it the same way, you making sure that we're following the rules. Um, and like I said before, listening to presentations from several attorneys, you know, Hungerford's put one on. Um, Lisa did, all the specialists that specialize in schools and how to implement in schools. Um, so yeah, so it's.
And the exemption forms are also the same for every district?
The exception forms, yep, they were put out by O H A and those are the ones that we have to use.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify that.
So with that said. Tyler Smith, you said you were gonna make a comment like ten minutes.
Chair, Chair Brown, thank you very much. I didn't mean to interrupt the meeting, but I did want to um, point out a few things to um, Mrs. Fowler. And Superintendent Morlock, as they develop the policies on these, to be aware of. Um, I understand, Ms. Fowler, you said you got some advice from attorneys from um, the E- Education Service District. Um, but what I haven't heard yet, and I want to just make sure, uh, because no one consulted with me on the development of any of these policies. But that you are following and that you're aware that the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission has issued guidances on. Both um, vaccine mandates and Title Seven. And how you have to take um, accommodations for medical exemptions and religious accommodations under federal law. All the school districts right now, and most of the presentations by the Oregon Department of Education seem to be only talking. About Oregon Health Authority's administrative rule. And I want to protect the school here, and so I wanted to make sure that you guys are aware the federal law applies here too. Because the school district employs more than fifteen individuals. So Title Seven of the Civil Rights Act, forty-two U S C two thousand E J also applies here. And there's been guidance. And there's been guidance given by the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission that should also be considered. The reason I mention that is that has a different standard. Equal Employment uh Opportunity Commission does not allow you to have uh require, for instance, a priest or a pastor, a signature or a doctor um verification on certain types of exemption forms. The O H A form requires that. So you, you, you might want to think about if somebody didn't have on a religious exemption a signature or an authentication from a priest or a pastor, whether that, whether a denial based on something like that would also pass federal muster. And so there's more to think about if you, if the E S D people are, are your resource on this. Make sure that your process complies both with the state administrative rule process and federal law. That's the point I wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of.
You said, is this something that is also being discussed among your other colleagues?
Um, yes, uh, most of the attorneys that practice in the area of school education law and employment and labor law law met a couple of times um over the last couple of weeks. And we've tried to coordinate um most of our advice um as we're going through it. And we have clearly communicated and I think I even um talked to Nikki specifically about it, which is there is absolutely no requirement um that there be a letter or a signature or any kind of a notary from, and so clearly, in Oregon's guidance is very similar to the ones coming out of the federal government. So we have copies of those, we've distributed them, we've actually given them some other resources besides just even those from some other states that are doing um some pretty good communication on how to apply those um exemptions. So everyone seems to be from that, I, I represent fourteen school districts in the in the Marion, Polk, and Yampel County area. And the folks that I've worked, that I've talked to represent um central Oregon. And then there's some that do some statewide practice. Uh, we all are pretty much saying the, the kind of the same thing. And at least the districts that are here in this tri-county region uh that I'm aware of, we're all kind of moving in the same direction. Looking at all very similar combinations, um, trying to implement similar types of safety patterns uh depending on uh who the student is being served and what the, the job.
Thank you.
Chair Brown, that was just it. It sounds like uh Mrs. Fowler already got the advice that um the signature requirements from a third party may not fly under federal law. It's still yet to be determined, but if that's being given to you, then I just want to make the, make sure you're taking all of that into consideration. Because the O H A form does have that on there and make it look like it's required.
Yeah, that's not how we've read the form, so in fact, some people have turned it solely uh letter from their pastor and were getting a personal statement from them. It has to be on the O H A form, not just a letter or an email from the pastor.
So Nikki, on, on these boards that you do the interviews on, how are you taking this objectivity out? And um are there people on the board? Let's just use Christianity as an example, if they're applying for a religious exemption. Uh, I guess, how are you squaring that with um, you know, what they're saying, what they're tying the exemption to with, with uh biblical um, you know, excerpts or, or um words, are, are you gonna have somebody there that's a pastor or anything like that? Or how are you gonna take the, the subjectivity out of it?
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, um, you know, we wouldn't require a statement from a pastor, we won't have a pastor there. It'll be a discussion with the employee and the employee would provide what they're talking about. So they would just provide their source, their evidence of that. So if they're saying, you know, using your example, if it's Christianity, they can bring forward whatever excerpt that they want to, to just kind of um show how it's tied. Um, and that's all it is, it's a pretty simple process. Um, we don't, we're not asking for anybody's, you know, life history, we're not asking for um, you know, documentation from church or anybody else. This is a very, it's an interactive process with the employee. Um, and kind of a one-on-one conversation, so.
Nikki, if they're, if they're granted the, the medical or the religious exception, that's the first part. Second part is, is gonna be uh the tougher part about how we fit them into the workplace, correct?
Correct.
So.
That's, that's just, huh?
What's that?
I said that, that would be the second piece of it. So yeah, we go through the process with the exception, inter- the interactive process, talking to everybody about their exception request. And we put out there that we're hoping to have all those um answers out by the twenty-eighth. Um, but that depends if we can get all of these interviews done by then, but that's the goal date. Um, is to let people know whether the exceptions has been granted at that point. Um, and with that decision, then that's when we would outline the accommodations required to meet the safety needs of staff and students, so.
So could they receive a medical or a religious exception and then still be terminated because you don't find accommodations for them to work in our schools?
Um, in theory, if they're in a position that we cannot ensure the safety of students, um, that could be a direction, that could be a possibility or unpaid leave for a period of time um to help accommodate maybe a, a future vaccine or help accommodate, you know, um just them, an employee wanting to think about it longer. Um, but yeah, I mean, that's, the, the O A R very clearly states that we cannot employ people that are not vaccinated unless they meet one of those laws. Um, unless they meet one of those exceptions and also we can accommodate it in a safe way. Um, so that's all we're, that's all this process is trying to determine. Um, is that employees who are in the district, um, who are not vaccinated um can be in the buildings and still keep everybody safe. Um, we realize that the students, most students in our buildings are not able to get vaccinated yet. That's why we need the adults as much as possible to be there um to help protect them.
And the vaccination is no guarantee to, to not catch it or to transmit it. And that's, that's science, it's been documented. So it really sounds like we're going to maybe strongly consider medical or religious exceptions. But we're gonna find that we can't put them in the building anyway. I mean, we've said this about five times in the last twenty minutes that there's no options to put them in the, in the building, almost zero. Um, even though other districts, you know, I think we really need to guard it. You know, if they have the N ninety-five mask, you know, and, and they're still tested. And we're eliminating, getting rid of a lot of people here and probably avoiding a lot of lawsuits. They're gonna, the boomerang back on everybody on this thing. And I.
Um, I, you know, I, I believe there are ways to have people in the building and stay using the accommodations. Um, with that being said, people need to follow the accommodations to a T in order for that to be, in order for that to work. Um, and so that's the other piece of it is the, is the follow-up and everything. And that, um, as we go through the exception process, if we're able, you know, able to have people back in the building that are not vaccinated, that they are following those protocols. Because that, that's the bottom line, that's what the whole, that's what it's out there for. Um, is to make it as safe as possible for students and staff. And so that's the goal of this process. Um, it isn't intended to get people out of the building, to find a way to terminate them or anything like that. It's to follow the laws it is and the O A R as it is. Um, and do what we're required to do um in the schools, because that, that is what's imposed on us right now.
Nikki, I appreciate that. I'm not, you know, I know this is a tough conversation and I'm not, I know you got a tough one here and I'm not trying to. I'll just, I'll just finish with this. I just think that if, if there's any way possible that we can follow another school district who's keeping our employees employed um in any way, shape or form. If that means testing, if that means having them stand on their head and get testing, I don't want us to lose employees in this school district. Uh, when they have got their exception and they have a valid reason for not taking the vaccine and that we're not punishing them for making that choice. And uh, you know, I get it, I'm not anti-vax, I'm not pro-vax, I'm just sitting back saying, you know, this is a uh, this is a pretty big overreach on the government's part here and it's, it's gonna, we'll see where it goes the next. You know, we've got two attorneys here, I think are gonna be very busy in this whole, whole process. But, you know, please, I'm just, I'm just asking, almost begging for our employees. I don't even care if they've called in and don't like me on the school board, I don't want them to lose their job. I want them to, to know that Newburgh School District is gonna do everything they can, everything they can to keep them employed uh in this school. Because we're talking about their paychecks, we've already got a board member's lost his job. This is devastating to a family and I've talked to many staff members who are, they're on the verge of a nervous breakdown, thinking they're gonna lose their job.
Yeah, we don't want it, we don't want to see um employees leaving either. I mean, we're, we're trying to um strike that balance of what we need to do to be accountable, follow the O A R, put things into place where everybody is, is safe and taken care of. Um, so that's, that's, you know, that's where we are. I, I don't, uh, we don't want employees to fear this, we're gonna go through the process and um you know, do the best thing for employees and staff and students.
I just want to thank you, Nikki, and the H R department, knowing how busy you are at the beginning of the school year, getting insurance set up for everyone and getting everyone in, in payroll and all that on top of what you have to do with this vaccination exemptions. I, I just want to acknowledge all the hard work you're gonna be, you have done and will be doing. And I know you don't want to lose any employees because you have to fill that spot. That, that we need, we need these employees very much and we need them to do the right thing and get the right paperworked for you.
Mm-hmm, right, no, thank you. We do have a very, I am fortunate in my position that I have a very, very good team and they're all hands on deck right now, working through this. Um, and it's not, not something that I'm doing alone at all, roping Derek in, roping Karen in. So we, we've got a lot of help with this process, so.
Hey Nikki, I just got uh two more questions on this subject. What, what is the criteria that you're using to determine um what the accommodations will be?
Um, the accommodations, actually, we have been collecting ideas um in general from uh, you know, the different webinars, we've been at what other districts are doing. Um, and just, just collecting as much as we can. So then, as we look at each employee and what their day looks like, we can look at the list and say, okay, this would help in protecting them in this instance or that instance. So it really will depend how their, what their actual duties are throughout the day. But it's a kind of, it's an all-inclusive list, so we have some options that will meet um employees individually. So it wasn't, the O H A did not provide a list or, you know, we don't have any generic list that was given to us that says these are the things that you can or will do.
Yeah, they gave some examples, I believe, I think that that's where the N ninety-five thing came from.
Right, right, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, that's a basic one that kind of, that's been out for a period of time. That or double masking or a mask and a shield or, you know, variations of any sort of um face mask or shield, yeah.
And then um to, to date, I know that uh, you know, the same teachers were all, were all masked up in schools along with the, the children and, and staff. Has there been a case within the Newburgh School District that um that a teacher or staff member or a student has spread COVID that could be tracked within the school as opposed to outside?
Um, as far as our district, I'm not aware of our district or uh, yeah. I wouldn't, I'm not aware of anything going on in our school that that's happened yet. It has happened in other districts, I believe, that we've read in the newspaper, but not here yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, we're just a little ways behind schedule here, so any more questions for Nikki? Nikki, thank you very much, I know it's a tough one. Uh, appreciate you being uh standing there and answering all those questions, being on the hot seat, so. But you don't get any breaks because we're moving on to new business here and we're gonna have to hear your cell tower lease amendment agreement here.
Well, this one should at least be short and sweet for you. Uh, we already have this cell tower lease in place. All this amendment will do is to expand, uh, extend the life of it by five years. Um, and they do this periodically because they want to be able to keep selling the tower to other companies. Um, and if it gets close to the end of the lease, they fear that we're gonna take the cell tower away or they won't have access to it. So this is just an extension of the um, the years on it by another additional five years.
Got it. I think it's pretty straightforward. Has anybody got any questions for Nikki on this?
No, I'd like to make a motion.
There we go, waiting for that one.
Move the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approve the amendment to the Newburgh High Option and Site Lease Agreement with S B A twenty-twelve T C Assets LLC to extend the lease term.
I second.
Thanks, you guys. Raise your hand if you agree with that uh lease agreement. It looks like we are seven zero on that vote, so thank you very much, board on that one. Nikki, gosh, I think you're off the, the uh hot seat here, so. You haven't had.
Okay, I can go with that.
Yeah, I know. Thanks, Nikki, very much. Um, we don't have a lot of time left and so I'm gonna move right through to C. Uh, we have Derek Brown up on the student investment account, S I A. Derek, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Thanks, Chair Brown. Let me share my screen real quick here. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thanks very much for the time tonight. I'm Derek Brown, I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Newburgh School District. Um, tonight, I'm providing you with our uh twenty twenty twenty-one annual report for the student investment account. This is a required report uh for the grant. So uh, we do this uh with, we'll, we'll be doing this with you every year that we have these um resources available to us. Um, and hopefully, uh, it won't take a whole lot of time for me to go through. Uh, I know you've uh got a lot of material in front of you tonight. So just a couple of reminders for folks. Um, we have organized our student investment account plan into three primary areas. Mental and behavioral health supports and safety, academic instruction intervention and additional or other classroom supports. Uh, and those things are all aligned uh very well with the, the intended purposes of these dollars uh from the state. Uh, there are three primary outcomes that are associated with the expenditures. Uh, one being increasing support for students' mental health and behavioral health needs, increasing student growth and achievement in core content areas, and increasing graduation rates. Just as a reminder, uh, for last year, um, this is what uh our plan looked like. We hired the following staff, uh, we were allotted about one point two million dollars. Um, we believe moving forward, we already know for this year and next year that we've had an increase in our allocation. Um, and you as a board approved uh that plan uh in a recent meeting. So uh for last year, though, uh, we had uh this amount of, of dollars and we did these things. We hired four F T E therapists through a partnership with Lutheran Community Services. We hired a sped behavioral health coordinator, some additional counselors, a math tosa, some other licensed staff. Uh, many of those were in the area of English language development support. We hired a bilingual help desk technician and we were able to uh purchase about twenty-five hundred Chromebooks, which was part of our uh sort of standard uh inventory lifecycle processes. And then, of course, we had some dollars that were uh put aside for indirect costs as well. Part of the report uh asks us to uh reflect on some questions that are posed by O D E. And so uh I, the full report is included in your board packet uh where I walk through uh our reflections on these things. Uh, the slides, I'm just giving you some paraphrased responses. Uh, the slides, I'm just giving you some paraphrased responses here. Um, but when we think about what the positive effects at least so far have been, uh, certainly hiring additional therapists and counselors and other uh, mental and behavioral health needs uh, supports has been really critical, um, especially given what we went through uh, last year with basically having it almost an entire year of distance learning and all of the difficulties that, that come along with that. Um, hiring the additional licensed staff, particularly in the area to support our English learners, has been really powerful and important in our schools. And then of course, uh, focusing again on uh, our bilingual help desk technician who's been in place now uh, for uh, a year, supporting our Spanish speaking families. And those have been um, really powerful um, parts of this plan and we're excited about being able to continue those uh, barriers. Uh, like any other school district, COVID has created lots of challenges for us. Um, we know that distance learning um, uh, is not the most effective mode of learning. Um, and so we've done our best with that. I think we've done, uh, our teachers and other staff have done a really amazing job of trying to make distance learning as uh, powerful as it can be last year. Um, and although it's been a challenge, um, I think everybody in our school district gained some new uh, technology skills, which will continue to build a leverage moving forward as well. Um, with all of this, you know, missing the social component um, of school has been um, uh, really difficult, I think, for students and educators and, and anybody that's been involved. So uh, as Dr. Joe mentioned and others have mentioned, being back to in-person learning this year has been really exciting for us to get back into that particular mode of learning. And we know that our S I, S I A related investments uh, will become even more powerful uh, while in person learning. Uh, there we go. One of the questions that they ask us at the state is to reflect on how we've been able to do our community engagement. Uh, so I just wanted to point out that uh, even though last year we were doing most of our work in a distance kind of dynamic that we did continue to use surveys uh, and occasional online forums as ways of collecting feedback, both from the community and from staff. Um, fortunately for us in Newburgh, we put a really high priority on uh, understanding uh, what the community uh, thinks and what they're experiencing uh, with uh, with education. Uh, so regardless of S I A, we're always going to be looking for opportunities to um, engage with our community and engage with staff, engage with students to know um, what they're thinking, what they're experiencing, and then how uh, how we can move forward and improve. We've uh, even through the pandemic, we've received pretty high response rates uh, from folks who uh, I think um, you know, we're excited about the fact that people do want to weigh in uh, on, on things and we, we use that information to try to help improve um, our work. There's a question about how we prioritize uh, our decisions in terms of, you know, how do, how do we select these uh, particular positions or functions to add to our team and add to our schools. Uh, and so I just wanted to point out that all of our decisions are data driven. So taking a look at core content, achievement and growth, taking a look at graduation rate, taking a look at attendance rates, taking a look at discipline data, taking a look at uh, climate survey information from our teachers, uh, asking staff about their professional development. All of those things um, come together uh, as we take a look at our data and try to identify where are we doing well? Where do we have some gaps? And how can we use S I A uh, resources to address those gaps? Uh, so we start with our data and then we take a look at the feedback. And in this case, we also created uh, kind of a tiered hiring plan. So we had a sense uh, in conversations with the state that allocations uh, over the next couple of years might go up or down, I think. Uh, so we wanted to be able to respond quickly if we found out that our allocation had increased or decreased. Uh, so that was uh, something that we, we did and it helped us because we did see some fluctuation during that first year. Again, uh, this year and next year, our allocation is uh, closer to three million dollars, which is uh, about seventy five percent of what we think our full allocation will be. In terms of next steps, uh, again, the annual report is a requirement for the board to review and to approve. And once uh, once you do that, then we will uh, post it on our website and it will be submitted to O D E by no later than September thirtieth of this year. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Derek, are we still on the is that like uh, there's many that we need in a year and we still have old, older ones out there that are like one year old or two years old?
Was that, I'm sorry, there was some ruffling going on around the microphone. Was that around the Chromebooks?
Yeah. How many total do we have out there? Is this replace all of them or just like half of them?
No, it doesn't replace all of them. I'd have to ask Dr. Neff what percentage that replaces. My guess is that it's probably around a third or a fourth typically, you know, we work in cycles of three or four years to, to cycle things in and out and do preventative maintenance and things like that. But I would have to ask uh, Dr. Neff for the exact percentage on that.
Got it. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for uh, for Derek there? Derek started to make you wait so long in the evening to.
It's okay. There was one other thing I, I forgot to point out. I just wanted to mention um, that there are uh, metrics associated with our S I A plan. Uh, last year as we were uh, entering the school year and uh, basically statewide, we were in, you know, the distance model. For the most part, the state came out and said that they were going to suspend the first year of metrics, meaning um, we have set goals around growth and achievement and graduation rates and a few other areas that are defined by the grant. Uh, but the reason that I didn't put any of that into the report for you this year is that the, the state basically gave us a year of grace, knowing that everybody was doing distance learning. So um, what you'll see in the future as this annual report comes up is we'll show you the data. Um, we'll show you the state test scores. We'll show you attendance. We'll show you all of those things. And we'll show you how we're doing in those areas relative to the goals that we set when we built our plan a couple of years ago. So um, I just wanted to make sure that especially for our new board members that have only been involved in this conversation a couple of times, that we do have um, some very clear uh, goals and methods, uh, data that we'll be tracking uh, relative to the S I A work.
And Derek, are we looking at how we would have done if they not waived that requirement?
Well, as soon as we have some, some data to look at, you know, we have a, we have at least a year and a half's worth of void in terms of those state test results. So we'll use other classroom derived information for sure. Um, we'll have, we have some quarterly diagnostic assessments. We do have other data that we can look at to evaluate how we're doing and we, we would be doing that regardless of S I A for sure. Um, but we do look forward to getting back to a place where we have a full uh, set of data uh, that we can use to evaluate systems health.
And then you're looking for a motion on this tonight. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. It does have to be approved by the board before I can submit it to the state.
I move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approve the twenty twenty one student investment annual account annual report as presented for submission to the Oregon Department of Education.
I second.
Hey, Derek, again, thank you. Uh, all those in favor. Um, I'm still on uh,
Point of, point of order, Mr. Chair should ask for a discussion.
Okay, I thought we did. Um, is there any more discussion on that? Okay. I can only see Brian on my screen. I'm still on the contact information.
Let, let me stop sharing so you can.
Thank you, Derek. Thank.
Yep. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Appreciate that. So we have a motion in a second. All in favor of what Derek just presented, please raise your hand. And I see us at seven zero. So again, thank you very much on that vote. Appreciate that. Um,
Thanks for the time.
Thanks Derek for your presentation.
I know that we're running a little behind schedule, but we had a, a scheduled break and I'm hoping we can take one now.
Well, we're stopping at ten. We've been, aren't we? Uh, ten o'clock is our, our end time tonight?
I don't know.
I was talking, I was asking Jen and uh, sorry. Jen, are you still there?
I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Do we have our translators till ten o'clock tonight?
Um, I actually believe they are scheduled until eleven like I was requested.
Okay, uh, then we will uh, take a break and yes, I appreciate you asking. Uh, we'll go five minutes and we'll be right back. It is ten fifty, so ten or nine fifty-five, we'll be back. Hey, we're getting close here. We got five of us. Six. Seven. I'm not sure about uh, Dr. Morlock, are you here with us? He's here. Anybody else need to be here on this one?
How many, how many public members do we have?
I do not know. Jen, can you answer that question?
Uh, and it looks like we have one hundred and ninety-seven at the moment.
Great. Thank you.
Well, thanks for staying up late. You hundred and ninety-seven people out there. Um, next up is policies. Um, this is uh, ensuring safe environments to learn policy. First read, uh, Vice Chair Brian Shannon, can you comment?
Yeah, this is the language uh, that the policy, the draft uh, committee uh, and is recommending to the board uh, for approval at our next meeting. This is only first read, uh, so we don't need any motions or anything tonight. Uh, but hopefully folks can get over and come back uh, at the next meeting with any amendments.
Brian, I heard nothing of that. I don't know if your audio is cutting off.
Yeah, Brian, I missed some of that too. It was kind of uh, kind of.
Sorry, my internet's having trouble, I think.
That sounds better right there.
Okay, sorry. My internet seems to be cutting in and out this evening in the last few minutes. Uh, so this is uh, I'll be quick. This is the uh, language that the policy committee uh, devised and is recommending for approval. This is just a first read, uh, so we don't need to take any action tonight. Uh, but I'd recommend folks read it and uh, come back with any amendments they'd like to put in uh, at our next meeting.
Any, any discussion there?
I, I would like to make a motion to refer this policy to a superintendent standing committee to allow students, staff, administration and community members to really look through the policy and see, does it address the issues? What, what is the problem we're trying to solve? And to set a time limit to six months for them to refer back to, to give us but better verbiage that will meet everyone's needs.
So Rebecca, you just made a a request or a motion?
I made a motion to refer this to a stand the, a superintendent standing committee. To move to, to, not to table it, but to move it to a different um, group.
Okay.
I would need a second.
I'll second.
So Brandy seconds that. Any further discussion on that?
I feel that it's important that we listen. I feel that it's important that we listen to to our constituents, but especially to our students and staff who this personally affects. We've, we've heard tonight, we haven't heard much from students. We didn't, we heard one staff member tonight. We need to note the administrators who are going to uphold the, the policy. And we have a lot of passionate community members on both sides. And I think if we, if we if we turn over this, it to a standing committee by the superintendent that we can actually address this without taking up so much board time. That, that they, they would have the, the the wherewithal to, to look at it, to, to see what the problem is and to try to affect a solution that, but every side would be satisfied.
I agree. The reason I seconded this motion is because I feel like this is clearly an incredibly divisive issue. And if we are able to create a community approach in which voices are heard and people are able to add input, constructively creating a policy that can then be reviewed to ensure that it's meeting all legal standards. I think that that could be a really good way for this specific issue to help the community come together and to hopefully stop further contention and division.
Hey, thank you. Any other comments in their discussion?
I would oppose the motion, you know, we've been told that it's very urgent that we replace the August motion with policy language so that we diffuse any potential litigation coming out of that motion. And the way to do that is to replace it with official policy. Which this is, it was drafted by the, the policy committee as this board requested. So I see no reason to refer it to some and to be determined select committee for further review. We're having a special, the board chair already announced, we're having a special listening session next week devoted entirely to public comment that folks can come to and express their concerns. And we can certainly integrate what we hear at the next board meeting with amendments. So I don't see any reason to delay this six months. I think that would needlessly delay the process and would not address the legal issues that we're currently facing as well, in this policy in the place of the August motion would.
Well, I think the, the reason to delay it is, is exactly that. We're trying to, to solve us a problem that if we rescind the directive, that would take care of the, the various legal and ethical complaints that are against the board. So if we could rescind that, that directive and then allow the, this, this superintendent standing committee to work through the issues in a collaborative measure, and we could show good faith to our citizens and to our, our students that we do want to listen to them, not, and not just throw things together just to get, to solve a problem, solve a legal problem we've created.
And I would also disagree with the one thing you said, Brian, about it being crafted by the policy committee. Because anybody who watched that committee meeting could tell that it was certainly not language crafted by the committee. It was language crafted, I'm assuming, by Tyler Smith. I'm kind of uncertain on that because it certainly wasn't OSBA. And it certainly wasn't the community or the committee. So it was not a collaborative approach, as far as I'm concerned, unless there was working between Mr. Smith and board members behind the scenes. This would help ensure that it was collaborative. And if, in fact, we're having community members and students say, I don't feel safe when I see these symbols. That needs to be a part of a larger conversation in creating a policy in a, in a committee around creating this policy would enable people from varying viewpoints to come together to help draft something that again could help potentially address some of the issues uncomfortableness on both sides and create some community cohesion.
So this policy was built by the policy committee using language from OSBA as lo, as well as language recommended by our board attorney. So I would disagree that we did not, I'm sorry that we didn't rise to your standard of crafting the language, but we did work on this and.
And it was.
Final.
It was not, it was a two to one decision to bring this to the pop, to the board, just so, so everyone is aware. It was not a united policy committee meeting. It was not a collaborative meeting. It was more run like a board meeting.
I have a question about that. Why was it even voted on as a committee? I was uncertain that, I was uncertain that there was even supposed to be voting. I mean, the two plus years, almost three that I've been on the board committees have worked collaboratively as an area of discussion so that then we together bring a proposal to the board. Did that change? And if so, where is the requirement for committee? Like, where's the language? Because I'm not sure that I'm aware of how committees function anymore.
We operate under Robert's rules as dictated per our policies.
We have, if Tyler Smith is still here, can we have him talk about the, me, if this is all legal? And I do believe that he discussed the issue with the attorney that we had with Karen Bickers. And they worked together on the wording. I'm not sure. Is that correct or, or not? Tyler, if you're still here.
Director Powell, so the first thing you said is correct. I did take a look at this and recommend some of this language to solve some of the complaints by the unions and some of the complainants. And then secondly, with regards to Ms. Vickers, no, I've talked with her as the entire board has about the litigation, I think that we covered in executive session, but not about the wording of this particular policy. This particular policy was was created prior to the, well, prior, I think after, I'd have to check the dates on that. After the executive session and before the last meeting, I think.
To be clear, Vickers did not help craft this policy.
I know, no, this, she didn't craft this policy. She's the insurance. I think one of the things that's important to know, obviously you guys are inundated with attorneys. There's OSBA attorneys who are employees of OSBA, not the district. You have ESD attorneys who are employees of the ESD. You have PACE attorneys who are insurance defense attorneys. None of those whom you actually select. So none of those are selected nor hired by the board. They're all hired for you by other people. So, you know, it's superintendent probably talks to lots of attorneys in the course of a month. And that's his choice, who he wants to talk to to get legal advice. I know you guys have lots of legal advice. I may have just simply to do what I'm asked to do. And so I was asked to come up with a policy that, yeah, I don't want to get into some of the stuff that should be covered in executive session. But I've come up with a policy that's legal, legitimate, and covers the concerns. And I recommended some language that all of you were copied on long before the last meetings. And then I think there's been a number of changes since then.
And then you also have, who was the, the gentleman from SBOA came in and and helped you guys put this together?
Spencer Lewis.
Yeah.
Who sent us an email today, I think it was today, maybe yesterday, saying that they still have grave concerns around the legality of this current wording.
Mr. Director Powell, I didn't quite fully answer some of your questions, but this does have the, the language that was proposed takes care of the union concerns that they wouldn't be able to wear pins or display union paraphernalia. This covers that. This also covers the concerns that were addressed. I think, I think that the directive was addressed that, which was teachers displaying materials that might make a student feel uncomfortable. That may, might make them feel that they can't speak freely on their particular issues and so represents everyone. This also takes into effect, there was a lot of conversation during the last month over free speech and students' free speech. And I think the original motion and directive didn't really, wasn't, I don't think intended for that. And this does not govern nor regulate student speech in any way, shape, or form. And so those, those are some of the legal issues that had been presented by the public, by some of the board members, by other legal counsel. And I believe those are all addressed and satisfied with the proposed policy. It can always be changed and policies do continually change. So I think that's on the table for all of you to change it between now and next meeting if you choose, or even after that point in time.
So the policy we have right now is that legal in, in what, in every areas or is there's, could there still be a problem legally with the wording?
It was to, to talk, go into the sausage making a little bit here, description of how the sausage is made. Each time there were complaints or concerns addressed by unions or potential plaintiffs or folks, this had changes made to address what their concerns were over the course of the time between that first motion and when we were engaged and then the presentation of it at your last board meeting.
Renee, to answer your question, per Spencer's email, there are still legal concerns that this is illegal.
And what are those concerns?
You, we can ask Spencer Lewis that.
Okay, maybe that's something we can discuss and, and before we do our second reading and we can discuss it and see if we need to reword some of it. So if he has an issue with it, he can let us know then, maybe in that, in the meantime.
I'm sure if we reach out, maybe.
Director Shan, do you want to reach out to him as being part of the policy committee? Or do you want me to do that as board chair?
I'll defer to the board chair.
Okay, I will call him tomorrow. I'm dealing with him anyway. And I will get his take on that. And then as my promise to Rebecca, I will get that in an email to you guys right as soon as I get that information. But we still have a motion and we have a second on what Rebecca said, if we don't have any further discussion, but if we do, keep talking. Appreciate all you.
I really, I really want to, to vote for a standing committee. I, I feel it's imperative that we turn this over to the students and the staff and the admin and the community members who this impacts. And it will help relieve the pressure on the board to, to be able to do other things than than, than deal with this divisive issue that's, it's been, become so much. I think we need to listen to our, to our constituents. And, and you ask them to, to come up with, with with solutions. Well, this is a solution that they could come work on. And we could get people from both sides to work together collaborative and to show, show, show the, the community and show, show them that, that Newburgh is a welcoming community. We, our Chamber of Commerce has written to us how many people are, are not coming to do for personal, for personal reasons. And, and our city council member has, has asked us to reconsider. Let us take this chance to reconsider our actions and, and and make it possible for our students, staff, and admin and community members to work together on this problem.
Rebecca, I just have to comment on that, too. I, I've heard that same thing. I've talked to Mayor Rogers and different people in the in the community. And I've also talked to business owners who have had, and say they're coming here because of of some of the actions we've taken. So again, it's a divisive subject, but there are people on both sides of this. Oh, it's not just a, you know, we've lost, you know, business here, lost business there. We gain it, you know, it people say a lot of stuff about, you know, bringing their business or taking their business away. So that's not a, a real good barometer of, of where the whole community is at. But if we still have further discussion, go ahead. You guys keep going.
Just another reminder, I have said that my pronouns are a, yes, she, her, just to make that in the record.
Okay. All right, well, we are at that point where we still have a motion and a second on that. So if we're ready to to vote on Director Pyros's motion, all those in favor of the motion to send it to a superintendent committee for six months, please raise your hand. We have three votes for yes.
Could you, could you read them out, please?
Rebecca Pyros, Inez Penya, Ella, she, her, and Brandy Penner voted yes. Those voting no, please raise your hand. We have no vote from Dave Brown, Trevor DeHart, Renee Powell, and Brian Shannon. So motion fails. So we keep moving forward here. Again, there's, I think I read seventeen pages there. I would say, just like Director Powell said, let's go through this thing with your fine home and be ready on the on our meeting with the session to, to look at this and have a lot of discussion.
Are we going to, are we going to, to, we're having a work session on the twenty-eighth. When will this, when will this be put forth?
We'll do it at the start of the meeting.
All right.
We'll just start a meeting. And then, again, go through it. Let's keep having the discussion. Good points all the way there. And again, you know, let people know the twenty-second is a, is a big night. Remember, it's two minutes, though. We're trying to get as many people in to speak as we possibly can. I know that's been a point of contention. But guys, we haven't had very many meetings and not a lot of time slots. And it's, you know, we're pushing, you know, four and a half hours tonight. So as we move forward, you know, if people want to speak, tell them to call in, you know, make sure they're at seven PM on the twenty-first. And then when we get into that meeting, we will, Rebecca, if you're okay with it, we'll do the the Fudge of Allegiance and we'll go right into public comments. Jen and I have talked about that. So we won't be making normal board comments. We won't be discussing as normal in public comments. We'll get as many people through the process as we can. Jen, thank you so much for putting the timer on there tonight. That was a big help. You worked really hard. Appreciate your, your help on that. So again, try to get to people for the twenty seconds so we can get I, I, it'd be fun to get over fifty people. If we go two minutes, we stay right on track. If we, if we fine tune it, we can, we get fifty-five or sixty. Last thing is that I will be getting back to you guys. I'll get to Spencer Lewis. And requests from all the board members, I'll be contacting you tomorrow. Sorry again for getting sick, but any agenda items that Rebecca and as Brandy, Trevor, Renee, Brian, you guys have be ready to, to let me know those. We'll get them on for that next agenda. So we can get talking about things. It would be fun to get back to education. So.
Would you like that emailed?
I'll, I'll email you if it's okay. And then, or you can email me. That'd be great. And as I do have a question for you. You want me to say Inez Penya, Ella, she, her every time? Or tell me what, what, what's proper?
No, and I guess that's why I asked if we emailed the suggested agenda items, because I do want to talk about pronouns and why they are important. So.
Good, that's perfect. That's the kind of stuff we, we, I know we all kind of want to move towards. So that's a great one to start with. I'll write that one down, Inez, and. you know, again, things that we can get talking about and I know it's tough. We're still frustrated with each other, but I did mean what I said when I started the meeting. I think each and every one of us really do care for kids. We definitely have our different viewpoints and I know we frustrate each other, but I do know you really care. I, I honestly do know that. And so I, I, I think that gives us a really good starting point to move forward. It won't be easy, but I think 20th will be fun. If we, if we can make it fun that night, let's do it. And let's keep moving forward.
Are we going to, are we going to talk about future agenda items? Cause I have two items I want to bring up.
Tonight, if you want to tell me, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to, to suggest that the, the 22nd is changed from a two hour meeting to at least a three hour meeting. And that we use, we dedicate one hour or at least 45 minutes to students, 45 minutes to staff, and 45 minutes to parents. Because the, we haven't heard from students and staff. We've heard a lot from community members, but not, and, and, and we need to hear from parents, but we need to hear from community, from students, staff, and parents.
I will get that email to all you guys. Give me your, your honest feedback on that and definitely would like to hear from more students. So I got that one Rebecca, and as I have yours on that one.
And I, I also have a request if my nomination for my continuing my position on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee could be addressed at the 28th board meeting before, before we go into the work session, because I need to have my, my paper in by October 1st. If that won't work, I'll need to go to a different district to ask for the, their nomination.
Yeah, Rebecca, I got that email from the OSBA director on that and again, I'll send that out to everybody. So you kind of get in the loop on what that is. I know Brandy's on. I think Brandy, you're part of the main board, aren't you, for, for OSBA? And you're not up, but Rebecca is on, you know, there's a, every year, there's a rotation for, for the different jobs. So I'll send that out to all the board members and get your feedback. And yes, Rebecca, I got both those, so thank you.
Thank you.
Board Chair, I'm sorry, I need to interrupt for just one moment. Um, if we could, please, if we are going to email, can we not have board members emailing back? Because we do run the risk of creating a quorum online through our emails by discussing things through emails. So if you want to push that information out to them and they can, if anybody has an individual question, but we can't really poll them on what they would like to see or what their feedback is. We just run the risk of having electronic meeting online by emailing to all the board members and then having them reply all.
I was just thinking one-on-one emails.
Okay, then that, well, yes. Okay, we just might need to discuss that further.
Okay. I'll call you tomorrow morning, Jen, is okay?
That sounds great.
Thank you. Well, we're right here. I know it's really late. Anybody else have just a quick agenda thing? If not, you want to sleep on it. I am contacting you tomorrow, so you can.
Do, do we know what we're going to be doing during the work session?
12-step governance, you know, process. So, you know, our, our time isn't all night long. But hopefully we'll get through part of that, yeah.
Okay, with, with Steve Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, great.
You guys, I know it's been a long meeting. Again, I appreciate the, the executive session. For me, I found that super, super helpful. I thought it was really well done and that was the best one yet on the bond stuff for me. So I hope you guys got something out of that. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, you guys. Good night.